Start at five with a board officer and board member duties candidate orientation. We have already established our agenda and we will be moving to recognition of Mercer Island High School students regarding some activities they created for Islander Hour.
Thank you, President Larry. We are really excited to have these two students with us tonight. Bella Hartman and Samantha Wampold. I will tell you a little bit about their achievement and then hopefully they can share a little bit about what they instituted for the Mercer Island High School Islander Hour. They created a unique opportunity for their fellow students, particularly freshmen and sophomore and sophomores to hear from Holocaust survivors during Islander Hour. And you all know Islander Hour is evolved over time and whenever we can have it be student driven, it's always a great thing for other students. So Bella and Samantha brought this idea to their school administrators after previous antisemitic incidents that happened within the MIHS student body that had received a lot of public outrage and hurt many in our community. After an incident this past fall, the students met with Principal Kelly and filled him in on other incidents prior to his time here, particularly in 2019. And they wanted to come up with an idea that would let students know why the Holocaust is relevant to today and why it should never be joked about. They worked with other various youth groups to get connected with survivors from around the country and also worked with the Holocaust Center in Seattle. Their hope is that after this experience, the younger high schoolers, I love that term, since these guys are seniors, will have an experience that gives them a connection to the Holocaust that will remind them how important it is to learn about and to talk about it. Bella and Samantha are here to speak to you tonight about this Holocaust Education Committee project, how it came about, and I know they have plans, how it will continue after they graduate. So Bella or Samantha, I'm not sure which is going to go first, but we're so glad you're here and we are so proud of you for taking on this project on your own. So if you wouldn't mind enlightening us all a little bit about the next steps.
All right, I can take it Samantha, then you can follow up if that's okay. Okay, so currently I'm working with Mr. Rundle right now to, we had a meeting last week to discuss kind of what the next steps are going to be with this. Our plans are to kind of make this more of a district-wide thing, or that's the hope at least, that this becomes more of like a, including all the elementary schools and the middle school in something similar to this in years to come. So currently we have an application open for current or current sophomores and juniors, so rising upperclassmen for next year, and we're going to pick a couple of students to kind of pass that down to the, we're calling it the Holocaust Education Committee, and they'll work with Mr. Rundle and whoever else is on that to help us carry this on into next year. And so we have a couple of different ideas that we're thinking of, but we definitely want to stick with kind of this more light approach, it's like more positive rather than kind of just showing horrific pictures or nailing down history lessons. We want it to be more interactive because that was something that I tried that was this year that was new that I haven't done before, and I felt like it was really successful. So I'll pass it to Samantha if she wants to add anything now.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that we've been, well, ever since we put out the application, we've received a very, very good amount of people who want to help out in years to come, and it's just been really, really nice to see that feedback. And not only that, but we've had students who are non-Jewish and they're just interested in learning more. And so I guess my ask to all of you is if you hear people who are interested in applying for the committee, or sorry, my computer's way off, but even if you hear anything, just please spread the word out. We want as many people to have the opportunity to do it as possible, and we just hope that this is something that can continue on for years and that the school district will appreciate it.
Well, again, we thank you both so very, very much. Your work is definitely representative of the board's values, vision, and mission, particularly for diversity, equity, and inclusion and respecting all. So it is just so incredible to see this come through our students and that you have taken this work on. So congratulations on work well done. We are so proud of you and wanted to recognize you and celebrate your work during our celebration recognition time. So thank you both. Is there any questions or comments from the board?
Just on behalf of the board, I just want to thank you guys. I'm familiar with both of your backgrounds, and I wonder if your programs in Israel and learning to advocate in that experience served you. Clearly, it has served you well. So thank you so much on behalf of our entire community because we will all grow and learn from the action that you are taking. So thank you guys very much. Okay, so moving on. That was it for the recognition, right? There wasn't another, okay, I just want to make sure there was another part to it. Moving on to public input, today we have six, eight individuals who have sent us notification for public input. So I am going to hold everyone to the three minutes. I've been a little bit lax in the past when we haven't had as many individuals, but we do have a very full agenda, and I will need to hold everyone to that three minutes. This meeting is a meeting of the board in public. It is not a public meeting that guarantees interaction between members of the public and members of the board. If you would like to address the board on a particular issue, please complete the form that's on the website and submit it to the board secretary at least 60 minutes prior to the meeting. When addressing the board at the meeting, please limit your remarks to not more than three minutes. Appoint a spokesperson if the concern is a group concern, and if desired, provide written documentation to the board secretary. Public comments that name or otherwise identify a district student are not permitted without permission of that student's parent or legal guardian. The board may direct the superintendent to respond at a later date to the issues expressed. And I do want, before I call on the first person, I do want to acknowledge that we've gotten quite a number of emails from community members and staff regarding different issues over the last couple of weeks. Every board director takes it very seriously, and even if we don't respond to every email, which we often do not when it is one point of view, we look at them, your opinion matters, and we give it very much thought as well. So thank you for all of the emails. They have been reviewed, and the first individual is Molly Harnish.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you all tonight. My name is Molly Harnish, and I am a proud Mercer Island School teacher librarian. This is my 24th year teaching in Mercer Island Schools. I taught at West Mercer for 19 years before coming to Northwood as the teacher librarian. I'm here tonight to advocate for not only my library position, but for all four elementary school librarians to preserve our full-time positions and to not be cut to part-time. Now, I've had the pleasure of hosting many of you at Northwood during your annual school board site visits. You have been in my library. You have seen the excitement and the curiosity in our Makerspace activities. You have participated in my mindfulness lessons, joining with me and our youngest learners to share a mindful breathing exercise. You've observed our students browsing our extensive and diverse book collection during library periods, and you have seen students enjoying those quiet moments of quiet reading during a recess reading time. Our libraries are much-loved community spaces in all of our elementary schools. So here are some points I want you to consider before approving these cuts to the library program. The district really doesn't save very much money when it reduces the library program by a 1.0 FTE. It's only about $125,000. You have these funds in your reserves, and you will receive these monies from federal support for social emotional learning that could be used instead. Superintendent Kaloski and Dr. Rundle both indicated the need for more social emotional learning as we move into recovery next year. Who better to offer these supports than we, the specialists? We know every student in our building. We know our students their entire career from kindergarten to fifth grade. We know in a profound way that these relationships and social emotional learning are at the heart of all learning. And we librarians have those relationships with our students. They know us as trusted adults who take the time to listen to them and offer them a safe place amid the often hectic school day. We could provide these social emotional lessons and supports instead of bringing in other staff with the ESAR money, as was proposed at the last board meeting. You could keep librarians at 1.0 and use part of our time for these social emotional initiatives, mindfulness, executive functioning, alternative recesses, extra library time, small groups focused on students' mental health, ensuring students have that one-on-one daily contact. We can do this. We are skilled and trained. If our position was reduced to .75, our work would need to be modified to fit the hours. So who's going to do that work instead, especially if our volunteers are not allowed in the building next year due to COVID restrictions? No volunteers means more hours needed for librarians to complete the work, not less. Now, in order to maintain our 1.0 FTE, we will have to bump out the less senior certificated teachers out of the classroom from their general ed positions where they are happy, thriving, and doing well. These newer teachers are loved and treasured by their students and colleagues. And finally, MISD programs were bucketed as essential, nice, and extra, as referenced by the board at the last meeting. The library is more than just nice. It is the heart of the school. Please consider cutting other areas in the budget where programs have less direct impact on students. Thank you for your time to consider these important issues.
Thank you. Thank you for your input. Sorry, the joys of working from home and the dogs barking in the background. Next, we have Sally Voice.
Hello, I recently heard President Biden state, "Don't tell me what you value. Show me your budget and I'll tell you what you value." This quote resonated with me, for I'm proud to live in a community that has privately funded an additional police officers, school counselors, and even summer celebration events when budgets didn't support the costs. This community is one that has found ways to fund needed items. Our schools' programs should be valued in the same manner. I understand the Spanish program was a solution to a higher number of students in our elementary schools. Hiring four Spanish teachers brought down the student-to-teacher ratio, yet this was a Band-Aid for a problem that will still exist after removing the Spanish program. Understandably, the number of students enrolled has dropped. I am one of those families who did and is still considering leaving the district. This decision is not due to COVID or the wonderful teachers who work in the district. It is because of how special services are provided. One in five students are believed to be dyslexic. Even with the state bill, learning disabilities, or students with learning disabilities are forced to fail before appropriate interventions begin. The newly required screening and interventions support younger students, but do not help those who have been without scientific-based intervention for years. Having dyslexia myself, I know firsthand that learning a foreign language is not easy, probably even impossible. As it also is learning a musical instrument, math, science, history, or language arts. What does that leave our students? It leaves one in five students able to look forward to drama, the one class that fully includes all learning levels, all students, and brings everyone together to participate in musicals in place. Yet this is the item being proposed to cut. Without having the technical support person to show, to have these shows, that means everything, that means everything to a child who is furthest from educational justice is eliminated. That is a value our budget is clearly conveying and one we should not support. The pandemic has taken so much away from students. We've required them to learn without social interaction of friends, navigate the emotional trauma of having their always-stable foundation of schooling removed, and to take away the one aspect of inclusion that has been there for them should not be supported. When we dare to lead, we don't pretend to have the right answers. We stay curious and ask the right questions. We choose to lean into vulnerability when it's necessary to do the right work, and we find a way. If we are choosing to not invest in developing the hearts and minds of our future leaders, then we're failing them. I went faster. And I really think that that theater department, which is such a small amount of money, really should be considered of how much it means to students like I was, like my son is, who are dyslexic, and school is just really hard for them.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Yana Parker.
Sorry about that.
Go ahead when you're ready.
Good evening, school board directors, staff, and other attendees. My name is Yana Parker, and I have been a member of the Mercer Island community since 2005, a year after I moved to the US with my husband, the year my eldest son was born and the year my husband started working for the district 16 years ago. While we don't live on the island, we have many friends here, and we care about the community we are part of. We believe it in so much that we transferred our now-almost-16-year-old son here for seventh grade at the recommendation of several Mercer Island School District administrators when Seattle Public Schools was not able to keep him safe from bullying or meet some of his disability and high cognitive abilities needs. We wanted him, for him, what every parent wants, a high-quality education in a safe environment. He is currently in ninth grade at Mercer Island School District, Mercer Island High School. I am here tonight to comment on the proposed elimination of staff positions and programs in the light of the need for budget cuts. First, I noticed that many of the positions on the proposal the HR director drafted has several staff members who are not represented and are without protection of a union. Among them is my husband, John. His title of a technical theater specialist that is listed on the proposal as theater technician includes so much more than what the position name discloses. John provides support for the high school drama program. He facilitates the hands-on stagecraft class for high school students. He is working with the drama teacher as well as everyone involved in all other events in the auditorium. He is a, there is a wide variety of events that take place in the auditorium weekly and multiple drama classes on stage daily. Students learn about set design, logistics, and maintenance while working with John on hands-on real-life projects. He serves many students, a lot of them students with disabilities like our own. Without a technical technician, the drama program will not work. The drama program provides a safe space and a sense of belonging for many students. Many students, for many students, the stagecraft class is the best part of their day. John does his job because he loves his work, and it shows. It has had many, he has had many students go through the program and develop lasting relationships with them as a mentor. Many of those students go out into the world prepared because of him and the drama program. They often come back to say hello and attend theater performances at the high school. Some of them become friends as adults. I ask you to carefully consider eliminating any program that has been successful and the impact on our students. Once those programs and staff members are gone, it will take many years and much effort and resources to bring them back. I do hope that our son will get to take his dad's stagecraft class, which would not be possible if my husband is no longer employed here, as our son's enrollment depends on it. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Next, we have John Parker.
Good evening. Hi. The Performing Arts Center, the PAC, or the PAC, is a district and a community asset. Without a functioning stage and auditorium, performing arts in the Mercer Island School District are not possible. It is the technical theater specialist's job to make sure that equipment in the theater is functional, maintained for safety, and set up promptly for each for each use. During a typical week, the configuration of the stage changes several times, sometimes multiple times in the same day. Planning the logistics and smooth transitions between activities is a primary role of the technical theater specialist. Logistical technical coordination is vital to the preservation of any venue regardless of the users. Users of a performance space are usually thorough in planning, planning their own moving into and using a space, but notoriously less so when moving out of a space. And for sets and lighting, researching and purchasing needed materials and equipment, scheduling, and supervising at events production crews to get groups into and out of the theater safely and efficiently. The technical theater specialist serves as a lead house manager for events, ensuring that visitors have a safe and comfortable experience. The technical theater specialist serves as a facilitator of the stagecraft class, instructing student carpenters, electrician, sound and light operators, et cetera. For many students, the PAC is their safe space. This is a truly behind-the-scenes job in that when it is being done well, it is often unnoticed. Now, in phase three of the pandemic, I am currently building sets that we will be using to shoot our virtual musical onstage with full stage lights and sound in April. In a couple of weeks, we start shooting for virtual performances, which could likely happen more in the fall, the amount of work that goes into this event is at least the same, if not more so. The custodians are not involved in any operations in the Performing Arts Center. Even today, I spent time planning configurations for use of the PAC in Phase Three protocols so that we might be ready to host awards events in June and possibly even graduation, if that's an option. I hope the board considers all of this when making decisions about the technical theater specialist position. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Susan Robinson.
Hi, my name is Susan Robinson, and I am in my fifth year as a secretary at the high school, which is a classified position. I have been on the classified bargaining team for the last two bargaining sessions, and I have fought through the night at times to successfully achieve pay increases for classified members, bringing them closer to a living wage. Therefore, I am dismayed to find out that the school district wants to cut classified staff working hours and other positions. I asked the district to provide me with the monetary value that all of these cuts would save them. They did not provide that information to me, so I have done my own investigation and have come up with a number, $135,610. That's what that'll save. Did you know that the Mercer Island School District gets paid extra money when users of the PAC have access to the theater tech? Who, by the way, has been there for 17 years, and you're considering cutting? Clients have already said that if there is no theater tech, they will not book the PAC. As Brian Giannini Upton stated at the last school board meeting, this is a very unique position, and getting rid of it will be disastrous. Who else is going to do this job? Did you know that the high school currently has library clerk hours available to offset a reduction of secretary hours? Did you know that the 25 highest-paid administrators in the district got an average of $8,000 in a raise from 2018-19 school year to 2019-20 school year? One person got a $16,000 raise. 10 of those 25 highest-paid administrators got more than a $10,000 raise. The school board can and should rewrite the school board policies to amend such high pay to administrators and incentive pay increases. You would be taking money from those least able to afford it if you get rid of the classified members. Mercer Island School District wants to implement these cuts beginning June 30. That is a violation of our contract that carries us through August 31. MISD is trying to claw back money that is owed staff for this year. The currently proposed action to eliminate the last two months of contractually agreed upon work and pay constitutes a property grab, and nothing in our current classified contract allows for this action. It is an unfair and dishonest attempt to take contractually promised pay from employees, and since MISD is not in dire financial distress, there is nothing that warrants this action. Why is the district seeking to harm their employees in this way? Hasn't this year already provided people with enough economic trauma? Is the school district really that desperate? I think not. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Erica Odison. I hope I'm pronouncing that right.
Where am I? Where am I? Where am I? Am I there? I'm sorry. Why am I not showing? Can you hear me?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, that's okay.
I'm on family leave right now for a little bit, and it's been a while since I've Zoomed. I apologize.
No problem. Go ahead when you're ready.
Thank you for the opportunity to have me speak this evening. My name is Erica Odison, and I'm the teacher librarian at Lake Bridge Elementary. I have been with the district for 16 years, and the past seven years I've been the librarian. As full-time teacher librarian, my mission has always been to inspire students to a lifetime of learning through the joy of reading. We feel very fortunate that our students have ongoing access to the library every single day of the week. We have students who stop by every morning and after school, and sometimes both, to check out books and ask for recommendations, or to see if the latest copy of Dog Man has been returned. Open recesses are full of kids reading quietly, checking out books, creating, or playing a board game with a friend. Our students love the annual book fair, birthday book program, Read Aloud Nights, Global Reading Challenge, Makerspace, author visits, and they enjoy having access to an inclusive, judgment-free space to explore the things that they're passionate about. We know which kids are the rock seminoles experts and which students are passionate about dogs, cats, and cooking, Greek mythology, dance, or axolotls. I understand that district budgets are tight, but I feel a strong need to advocate for keeping our library positions as full-time. You see, when I look at our library program, I have a difficult time considering what activities and events would have to go. I've been tuning into the board meetings week after week, and the need for increased social emotional learning at our schools is a recurring theme. The elementary librarians can lead the way, providing SCL supports for students as well as teachers. You see, so much of what we already do every single day in the library is centered around SCL. How can we support? Molly mentioned some ways, and I'll mention some more. Mindfulness lessons, modeling executive functioning skills, second step lessons, increased open recesses for struggling students, or all students for that matter, extra library spots for enrichment extension activities, small group support, one-on-one student support, book clubs with focus on character and kindness, Makerspace and robotics, and also curate books with SCL themes for classroom teachers. Our students deserve full access to library programs, and we have been supporting our students' SCL learning for years. Our students need these skills more than ever. As one parent wrote to me, "We've seen firsthand how critical books were this year. It's a kid's way of escaping, dreaming, and having hope." The library has become so much more than just checking out books, and we see the opportunity to expand the program. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up, we have Liz Gorski.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Great. Good evening. Thank you. I want to thank the Mercer Island School District and the school board for all you've done under these really difficult circumstances, as this has gone past a year now. It's unfortunate that it took this situation to open my eyes as a parent to the inner workings of the public school district and the difficulties faced every day in terms of navigating federal, state, and local regulations and the unconscionable hold and demands that the teachers' unions have impacting the well-being and education of our children. When I spoke at the board meeting for the first time last year, I posed the question on what choices would be made with the $2.5 million budget shortfall due to so many students leaving the district because there's no school. I applaud the reduction in force plan you put forward. While expected and difficult, it is a level-headed response to this crisis and its consequences. By limiting the cuts to nonessential services where possible, you are maintaining capacity for core learning. It is that core learning that is so crucial for our children now and will be instrumental in helping them catch up. And the gap is real. My fifth grader has been declined by two private schools we applied her to as the assessment showed that she is behind academically. When we moved here three years ago, she was performing above average. This afternoon, Governor Inslee announced an executive order allowing school districts to operate with three-foot spacing for desks. This follows his prior declaration of a mental health crisis, which states that all school districts must continue to work to exceed the 30% minimum instructional hours and must reach the school's maximum capacity and maximum frequency on campus in-person instruction that the school can provide as soon as possible. As a parent of two children in the district who have been damaged mentally and academically by being out of school for a year, I ask that the school district I ask that the school district board pass a resolution instructing the district to implement the three-foot spacing now, so as many children as possible can be accommodated in person this school year. I ask that the Mercer Island Education Association drop all forms of resistance to implementing this. Teachers have been vaccinated. The district has implemented safety controls and protocols that are clearly working based on the data on the COVID-19 dashboard, which shows zero in-school transmissions. And the CDC has updated the guidance to three-foot spacing based on science and experience from schools across the country that have opened. Listed at the top of the Mercer Island School District webpage is the saying, "Students are the priority." If students truly are the priority of the Mercer Island School District, then show our children you mean it by taking immediate action and implementing the three-foot spacing requirement and get our kids back in school. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And our last public input provider is McCall Avery.
Hi, good evening. My name is McCall Avery, and it's time to lift the lockdown on kids. Today's announcement from Governor Inslee to enact free feet spacing in class gives me hope that Mercer Island School District will step up for students and open all schools now full-time five days a week. With three months left in the school year, we cannot waste vital learning hours. According to the online school tracker Verbio, over 20 states have full-time in-person instruction, serving about 50% of the country. How blessed they are to have leaders who lead. These states, schools, and students demonstrate what can be done. When there's a will, there's a way. Sadly, at the very bottom ranks the few states putting kids last. California and Oregon take the bottom two slots and will increase as both governors have issued emergency school openings. Ranked 45th, Governor Inslee ordered all schools open to at least 30% compared with last year. On Friday, when he made this announcement, 28.5% of students were already in school. Governor Inslee set the bar so low, he barely has to trip over it. With the national teacher vaccine campaign underway, the gig is up. No more excuses. Our public school kids are the ones who lose when Governor Inslee believes 30% will do. This moves the needle for shuttered school districts like Seattle. This also demonstrates the subtle bigotry of low expectations. Can you imagine a Fortune 500 company declaring victory with a 70% failure rate? I don't think so. Our kids want, need, and deserve better than failing them, schools better than failing them 70% of the time. Our kids want, need, and deserve better than a paltry six to nine hours a week for in-class time. And our kids want, need, and deserve adults not related to them to look them in the eye and tell them, "You matter," every single day in person. With school-aged kids 10 times more likely to die by COVID, or die by suicide than COVID, we cannot wait. We have a mental health crisis on our hands. Getting all kids back to school safely and swiftly would be the best remedy for this leadership-failure-created calamity. Follow the science and open all schools now. Mercer Island is not a bare minimum school district and should not call 30% a win. Failing our kids 70% of the time is unacceptable, unconscionable, and offensive. Full-time in-person instruction should not be a luxury for those who can afford private school. It's time to lift the lockdown on kids. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that concludes our public input for today. Next up, we have superintendent update board policy 1809, communication and support to the board.
We have we have two items this evening. The first one is related to board policy 3141, which is our non-resident enrollment policy. In that policy, it states that the superintendent needs to make a determination prior to April 15 as to whether or not the district will be open for non-resident enrollment. And so this is the notice at prior to April 15th to say that at this time, this school district will be closed to non-resident enrollment. We are anticipating being fully open with a three-foot guidance for the fall, which means we are going to be having to make adjustments to class sizes to accommodate that, which is going to really impact our facilities. As we build our schedules for the year, if we are able to accept non-resident enrollment based on specific grades or schools, we will announce that and have that announcement widely distributed so that folks are able to submit those applications. But at this time, I'm having to announce that we are closed because of the unpredictability of our facility use based on the regulations and requirements at this time. Questions? And the second item is an update from our learning services team on our inclusionary practices work. I believe we have Fred here and also Jamie and Prescott, Director Jamie Prescott, and Sue Ann is here as well to talk about where we are going with our inclusionary practices. Fred?
Thank you, Superintendent Koloski, and it's a pleasure to be here this evening to bring forward some work that we've been talking about and updating you on over the past several years. So even prior to all of you sitting on the current board, we've done some work going back three and four years ago when we really started looking at some of our programs. And two of the programs that we spent quite a bit of time examining, and actually we hired outside practitioners to come in and help us with, that was the highly capable program, and then also our elementary special education program in particular. Based on those reports, and we'll talk a little bit more about that this evening, there were several recommendations for change over time, which we've been working on and also just monitoring the overall impact on our school district. And so turning our attention then this evening is an opportunity really just to present to you some of the work that we've been doing, but most notably what we have planned as we head into the 2021-2022 school year. So we began with the title of equity barriers, and we'll talk a little bit and provide a reminder of what our district improvement plan has been this year with removing barriers, but also looking at that word integrity. And in a recent training that I was in, matching your values with your actions is as important to integrity and making sure that we're in there. And so as we think about our barrier, or excuse me, our values as a school district, I always take us back to the ones that he was a school board and Superintendent Koloski brought forward based on all of the time spent with stakeholders several years ago across the district. And the one that we're focusing on the most this evening and in this presentation is creating inclusive and equitable learning settings. All four of them are important, and we always remind ourselves that they are purposely bulleted and not in a list order because they all have an interplay with one another, and they're important, but we're going to focus in on that one. Parent Edge, in partnership with the district about seven years ago, I believe it is now, brought Dr. Pedro Nagura to our school district to really open up a conversation around excellence through equity. And one of the definitions that Nagura and Blankenship put forward with equity is it's that commitment to ensure that every student receives what they need. And we oftentimes see that this term is confused with equality. And as Dr. Nagura also said, that equality is the enemy of equity in the sense that by trying to do all the same for everyone, that that's not truly equitable, that it's not about doing the same because we all arrive to the learning moment or in our schools or in our positions with various backgrounds. And so as we start to really dive into that word equity, especially as it relates to our values, we continue to go back and really seek to refine that. We also talk about inclusion and inclusion being that making sure that all students are fully included and that they're accepted in their learning environments, that we're thinking about the school community as a whole, and that really ties in that whole child piece. But it's really making sure that students are with their peers as much as possible and whenever possible. And so as we think about that, we have to think about that our students are not labels. We have done a I think we've done a, or we've made a conscious effort over the last decade or so of creating plenty of labels for students, and whether or not those labels are as an ELL student or as a high-cap student or as a special ed student, as a band student, we've put plenty of labels on students, and we're really trying to shift that and really reframe things as we move forward because it's not about labels, it's really about needs. And what are those needs of the students? We also know that our students have names, that they're not a level of a book, or they're not necessarily a score on a test, but that they have a name. And then finally, we need to start thinking about the services that we provide across our schools, that it's not a place that you have to go in order to receive the services you need based on your needs, but it's really driven by those services. And so equitable and inclusive is providing those services to those students who need them and when they need them. As a quick reminder, just going back to our district improvement plan, we brought forward this plan last September to the board, and I, rather than go through the whole plan, just wanted to remind the board that our main goal this year as a system, and we built our school improvement plan goals to align with these as well, but it's that our district will be identifying and systematically removing barriers that impede students' equitable access to learning and growth opportunities. And so along those lines, then, as we return back and we start looking at our plan, I remind us of some of the great work we've done in this space. There was a time in the school district that some of you may recall when our English language learner model was a center-based model in that elementary students who qualified and needed and demonstrated a need for those services for ELL actually were bused or sent to Island Park Elementary School, and it became kind of the center-based school. So if you were a family who had just rented a home or an apartment and in one of our attendance areas or just bought a home or a condo, then you were sent regardless of that new location to Island Park. We transferred that, and we really examined that it wasn't about an ELL program that we were offering, it was services that we were offering. And so in about 2015, we pushed those services into all four of our elementary schools so that students, the services came to the students rather than the students going to the program or services. Another example of some of the work we've done in this space over the years, and this dates back to when I was principal down at Lake Ridge, we used to have what we called the Spectrum Program or the Spectrum Model. Under this, we had a program where any elementary student with a diagnosis of ASD or autism spectrum disorder, regardless of where that student showed up on the spectrum, they were sent to Lake Ridge. And so again, we were providing the center-based program. And in about 2014, we started to collapse that, realizing that we can serve students in their home schools and rather than disrupt their locations. So as we look to next year, we're looking into what is the next phase in this and how does this continue to evolve? If we're really committed to these inclusive and equitable learning settings, it can't just be about certain programs. It can't just be about certain students. It really needs to be about all. And so three areas, and Sue Ann and Jamie are going to join us in a second to talk a little bit more. But three of these programs that we're now intentionally shifting to services are highly capable services, our emotional and behavioral services, and our inclusive and adaptive services. Currently, those are called the highly capable program, the compass program, and the PLP program. And so we're intentionally moving those to services. And so we're going to talk a little bit more about that and what this will look like over time. So with transitions and change become new beginnings, we know for some of our students, there'll be implications of either of not necessarily moving schools and staying in home schools or participating in those collaborative and community-based classrooms, but certainly removing labels and working extremely hard to make sure that we're talking about student-first language, that we don't have a PLP student. We have a student who has adaptive needs, and we were there to provide the services. Again, our students have names, not labels and numbers. For our staff, we've done also the same thing with many of our staff members, where we've referred to staff members as a PLP teacher or a high-cap teacher. And really, we're all teachers first. And we really talk about that in many settings, and that applies of whether or not it's certificated or classified. We all have that ability to make a difference in the lives of our students. And so thinking about what's our teacher-first language. We'll be looking at brading funds like we never have before, where we can start funding, say, an ELL teacher out of multiple buckets that might be ELL and special education, which would afford our ELL teachers to work with students who have identified disabilities in language areas and vice versa. And finally, we have some community transition. Not moving students between schools will be a transition, not having specific programs that people want to get into, but instead really starting to adapt of a new reality that it's not about getting into a program or getting out of a program. It's about getting the right services to the right students at the right time. When we look at Bridges' theory of change and transition, we need to be very aware of what this might look like over time. As we're making these announcements and rolling out our new commitments to these equitable and inclusive learning settings, this might not be received well by all staff members, by all faculty members, by all community members, especially as we start to define it and move forward. And we certainly understand that with change comes loss, and what our theory is, is that the loss today will be gains tomorrow. And so as we move through this neutral zone of some of the confusion, we hope to come out on the other side with a new and better opportunity for all of our students and that a student who may not have qualified for a previous program may still receive some of the benefits of those services right in their own classroom. There's a book that just came out, and some of us are reading right now, and it's called Removing Labels. And I think there's an interesting tie to our conversation this evening. One is that there's, on one side, there's barrier thinking, and barrier thinking is really predicated on biases and that are biases that we all have, and whether we like it or not, we have them, and some of them might be conscious and some of them are unconscious. But those biases, when they go unchecked, they become assumptions. And so a bias about a student becomes an assumption about that student, which then sets our expectation, which then gives them that label. And so we may have a student who comes with particularly high test scores or high academic scores, and we may already start forming assumptions about that student and setting different expectations than we do about another student. And so in shifting our thinking, then, we start thinking about possibilities. We start thinking about our values and inclusive and equitable learning settings for all students, not just for some students, starting to change and refine our language, setting our goals around those barriers and breaking those, and then turning those into actions for all students. So we know in times like this, it requires great leadership, and that leadership is not about just formal leaders in positions such as mine, but really about leadership across the system. And this was a graphic that was shared to with us by the Puget Sound Educational Service District when we were in a training actually around leading with a racial equity lens. And that is the point that many of us may want change. But it's not always popular to want to have to change ourselves because change is hard. And it's even harder when we think about leading that change, but the leadership is about envisioning a better tomorrow and then building bridges to get there with our stakeholders. And that's the commitment that we have. So a quote before I turn it over to Jamie to talk in more detail about our our changes to our highly capable services is that it is only by taking action, by working to disrupt the cycle, that we will be able to remove underlying attitudinal barriers that feed institutional and structural barriers. And so with that, Jamie, I bring you in and I will keep the slide projection going and you can just let me know when you want to move along.
Great, thank you. And so this presentation, this information is actually available in video format. It's available on our web highly capable webpage. And it will be shared with all families tomorrow morning. But the first few things, your first few slides in here, you'll see are repeat what Dr. Rundle shared earlier, just kind of grounding in our values, our commitment to equity and inclusion. And a reminder of our district improvement plan. One of the things, oh, hang on one second. One of the things we didn't that Dr. Rundle didn't talk about was our focus on universal design for learning and the work that we've been engaging in over the course of the last two years in looking at ways in which we design lessons and learning activities for students and really using the U D L lens to make sure that what we're providing to students is available and accessible to all students. We're not planning for certain students. We're planning for all. And by doing that, we have a number of different entry points and ways in which students can access the learning. Thanks, Fred. So if you recall, I think I've updated this group a few times about the high cap advisory. So we've got a group of parents, teachers, both in high cap settings and in general education classrooms, along with administrators at schools that have currently have the high cap program and don't. And then administrators both at building and district at a district level as well. And one of the things that we did and really focused on at the beginning of this year was to revise our identification process. So out of the review in 2018, we were we were tasked with identifying students and and not having disproportionality. And so in our previous identification process, we had students to take the C O G A T and then the Iowa reading and math assessments. We then took those scores, plugged them into a matrix. The matrix scores were then reviewed by a multidisciplinary committee. And then students either qualified or didn't qualify. They had to score certain a certain range in both the reading and the math or in the quantitative and the verbal in order to qualify to receive high cap services. Fred, if you want to go to the next slide. When that when that happened, then students would be moved into a high cap classroom. It was a homogenous classroom and they were centered at Lakewood and West Mercer. So students at Island Park and Northwood were displaced from their school, their homeschools and moved to high cap classrooms. With the revised identification process, the committee examined a variety of different tools and ways in which we could identify students in a more robust way than just looking at quantitative and verbal elements. And one of the things that we've changed is we've added the Torrance Test of Creative Thinking, so the T T C T. And we've put it into phases. So we've got phase one where students will be taking the T T C T and the C O G A T. And we'll get that data back and that data is going to go to a more robust multidisciplinary committee. It's then going to take that information and also look at things like students' home languages, student special services, other data points out of our our student data systems. And then make recommendations for students who should move to phase two of the assessment process. And there they will take the math, reading and science assessment. So the second assessment that we've added is the science component. Because students have a variety of different strengths and passions. And by limiting things in the elementary levels to say it must be math and reading, then we felt like we were missing some kids. By not analyzing data about creative thinking, we might not, we might not be capturing students who have incredible gifts and need challenges in in different areas. And so this new identification process is coming into play this year. Testing begins April 13th in the elementaries. So the kindergarten testing, universal testing is not going to change. They still take the C O G A T screener. But the second graders for universal universal testing will be completing the Torrance Test of Creative Thinking and the C O G A T in their classrooms with their teachers. Next slide. So originally, our plan was to have the new identification process and then convene the high cap advisory committee and really look at how to best provide a service delivery for the new identified students and and services that they needed to receive. There was a confluence of a number of things that occurred very recently. And in a conversation, it really came to light and kind of a light bulb went off for a group of leaders to say, well, this is the time. This is the time where we need to to take a stand and and really step up to the plate for students and find a way to provide the services that students need within their home neighborhood schools in the classrooms in which they're they are assigned to. So effective with the 2021 2022 school year, starting with grade three only, students will remain in their neighborhood schools and receive high cap services in heterogeneous classrooms. So no longer will we segregate students into high cap and non-high cap classrooms. This will provide rigorous and challenging opportunities for all students. And it supports our notion of an inclusive and equitable learning setting. Each year, then, we will roll up the new service delivery model, one grade. So next year will be grade three. The following year, we will have it for grades three and four. And then the year after that will be a roll up of grade five, grade five, and then we're also going to be looking at grades six through eight in that year, but we have a few years to kind of ready the system for that change. We know that there's a lot of, you know, excitement and energy around this and there's nervousness, there are transitions, things are going to look and feel different. And how do we plan and prepare for this? One of the things that we've done is Julie Newcomer, who is a fantastic instructional elementary coach at the moment. She's going to transition and really focus her work on as the inclusion and integration coach. She's going to be dedicated to the third grade team next year to provide professional learning, support with the curriculum, leading them in collaboration, making sure that she's able to then coordinate and connect teachers with all the different services in ways in which we will be able to provide support to students. So I'm really excited about that opportunity. We're going to lean on our current high cap teachers. We have a wealth of knowledge and expertise within the district and ways that we we can serve students. We also have incredible experts in social emotional learning, in behavioral support that by looking at an inclusionary model and bringing all kids into the fold, we also get to bring all staff into the fold. And so we've got these incredible experts who are going to be able to teach and learn from each other to really provide a well rounded opportunity for all kids. Some additional factors that played into this decision are John from John Hattie's Visible Learning. And so it's actually now a synthesis of over 1,200 meta analyses, really looking at student achievement and factors that affect student achievement. And so in the research, if you look at it, point four would be the the no movement, right? Like that's just a status quo, not significant change. And so if you look, ability grouping and ability grouping for gifted has an effect size of point one, two and point three. So not even at that point four mark. At a 1.0, that would be equivalent of one standard deviation. And with one standard deviation, we're really talking about two to three years of growth in student achievement. And so if we look at acceleration, enrichment and eliminating student labels, those numbers are significantly higher as far as improving student achievement. Other factors we looked at came from the Merce Rowland School District's Highly Capable Review that occurred in the 2017 2018 school year. And then I've talked several times about the collaborations with James Borland and Columbia University's Gifted Education Program. Several teachers went to trainings. I went to trainings. We've had seminars. We've had workshops and resources and books and things that we have been provided by him. So we are at the the early exciting phase of this process. Now, you know, the decision has been made and we're moving forward and now we are going to pull our expertise together. We're going to begin planning for what this looks like, what training and professional learning opportunities need to be provided, how we can structure the supports and resources for teachers and students. And so we're excited to embark on this work, but it's going to be a heavy lift as we head into the next school year.
So then I'll bring in Dr. Sue Ann Booby, our Director of Special Services. And as we bring her in, just kind of a reminder around just how we've tended to structure the work and our department in our district. In many large districts, you might have different departments and you might have your what many call a special education department and you might even have a categorical program department for Title I and ELL and you might have a department for technology. And what we've chosen to do over the years and partly because we're a small district, but even small districts tend to silo themselves, but we've really taken the approach that we're about learning services and we're not about teaching and we're not about learning. We're about learning for everyone. And inherent in that is teaching, but in that as well is a commitment that it's really about special services and not special education. There's plenty of education that's special, but it's really about the services that we're providing. And so I want to bring in our Director of Special Services, Sue Ann, to talk a little bit about the shifts in those two other former programs and now services related to other areas of student need. Sue Ann.
Thank you, Dr. Rundle. I am not going to repeat all of the reasons in the whys behind the changes because all of our students are general education students first. And Fred has already introduced that and Jamie reiterated that for highly capable. So as we look at special services, we're we're providing a continuum of services, not a continuum of places to go, not rooms and and places and programs. And our purpose is to assist students in accessing their general education. So we're going to focus on providing services that are closely integrated with construction. And this is coming out of the 2018 elementary review that Puget Sound E S D did before I was hired on. And in that, and we have not shown improvement in this area, that our the majority of our students have average cognitive abilities who receive special services. But there are only, there's a 40% gap between their ability to pass the state test and students with disabilities on on S back. So we're looking at a huge gap, even though their cognitive is is still average or within the average range. So we're really going to be focusing on eliminating the programs, the language and access to their core curriculum. So instead of going to a compass program, the student is going to be with their general ed students and will be providing social emotional supports at their building. Now, we've already been doing this for the past couple of years. We haven't moved a student in three years now. But we have created a behavior assistance team that has a B C B A led by Nikki Wender, a B C B A. And she has, we have behavior technicians that work with her that can kind of swoop in and assist in person at the at the building level as needed. And so we have created supports, in-person supports for that and have actually decreased the need to have a place for students to go. And that's K 12. So as we expand this, students are not P L P. They are students who require adaptive services, speech services, vision services, hearing services. And so we're really going to be looking at not the label, not that P L P student, but a student who needs these services. And the same thing with resource. You're not a resource kid. I don't want to go to that resource room. You're a student who needs support in reading, writing, math, social, emotional, or a study org, executive functioning, but you receive a service, not a place. So we're really going to be working on those pieces. It's just learning services. Students are getting learning services. Some of you have seen the inclusion dots and the evolution of inclusion over time. So exclusion, the students with disabilities aren't aren't there. Their unique needs aren't accounted for. They're denied access to education in all forms. And I I think back to when I was born, I had a cousin Carl who who wasn't allowed in school. And I remember him coming around to the household time. That was exclusion. He was told no. And then you have segregation where students could come, but separate but equal. Well, you can go to that building, that that place and you'll have your own stuff, but it's separate segregation. And then we have integration where you can you can come in, but you're going to sit over there. If you if you learn anything, that's great. But you're just in the building and it's, there's another saying about being invited or being invited to the dance and then being invited to dance. And we want our students to be invited to dance. So we have integration and we want to move beyond that. We want to move to inclusion. And I would even argue that this is an outdated model. If you look at and listen to Shelley Moore, there was a student at one of her presentations that says, this isn't even inclusion. Inclusion is every dot is a different color and we honor every student's unique needs that they bring to the table, whether it's cultural or disability or variable learning. Every student is unique and we need to be honoring that. And that would be true inclusion. So we're really trying to move this direction so that we are really not labeling our students and that they feel empowered to learn and they understand that every learner is a unique learner.
So as we set our sights and we continue to align to our values, it's important to remember that, you know, some have argued that change is easy. It's the transition that's the challenge. It's easy to make the change, but it's really changing our beliefs, our attitudes, our intentions, our behaviors. But going back to that possibility thinking, it really is about thinking about our students as individuals and moving forward. We have some tremendous examples of where we've already made progress. And it's not just the first two that I pointed to with our, the way we changed the ELL services and the way that we serve students with ASD diagnosis. It goes beyond that. We've got some tremendous things already happening in our classrooms in ways that we are including students and ways that we are making it accessible. What we are talking about here is honoring that work and now continuing it forward and taking it to the next level of what we can do as a system. If we really are about equity and inclusion, then it can't just be equity and inclusion, as I stated earlier, for certain what we've called programs or suit certain segments of our schools or certain profiles of students. It really has to be all of our students. The research about making sure that students have the opportunity to be around one another. And this even gets into the fundamental report later on this evening, as well as the discussion with fundamental four about becoming global citizens, that we are around a rich, diverse, varied group of people all the time in the world. And our our students in our schools can be even better as we continue to push on this. Our high school broke down barriers, you know, seven years ago or so, when we started really getting rid of entrance requirements in the A P classes and opening those up. And so this is just the next evolution. It's not something that's groundbreaking. What it is, is it's a continuation of work that we believe is important for our school district. So with that, I'll turn it back to you Superintendent Klosky in terms of where we want to go with questions or whatnot.
President Laurie, any questions or comments from the board at this time?
I imagine there are. I will let you guide the questions.
Give you a minute to. Give a minute to...
So I mean, unless someone else is jumping up to start. So I've had the fortunate experience to participate in the Inclusionary Practices Group. You know, less so recently as it becomes much more operational in the last couple of years. And, you know, to watch, to watch this is, it's an exciting change. I'll push back on what Dr. Rundle said in terms of change is easy and the transition is hard. I think change is about one of the hardest things we deal with. And I think we're saying the same thing, but it's terrifying. And I think the initial response is, you know, don't mess with my kid, right? Because you're going to make them do something different or you're going to make me do something different. How, um, how are you going to support our staff in terms of, I mean, is this putting too much on them right now as we've gone through major changes this year? Like many, many shifts? And then asking especially for our third grade teams to do another major shift? And how is the district going to be supporting our staff in doing that?
We have been doing the professional development for over a year now in the area of universal design for learning, as Jamie mentioned. And again, using our coaching cohort, our coaching team, certainly yes, as Jamie explained, we would be having a specific coach for our third grade team. But overall, all of our coaching team is skilled and is far along on the, let me see my word, they're very skilled at UDL. They've had a lot of training and a lot of conversation around it and are working closely with teachers in that arena. So again, several of the high cap teachers, as well as JN teachers, have been part of the Highly Capable Committee and have been hearing this conversation over time as well. Jamie, do you have any specifics that you want to add?
I think one of the things that I'm excited for is that we're going to convene the advisory committee to begin brainstorming. What are the needs? What types of training, professional learning, resources, curricular needs are there going to be by having these inclusionary practices and by serving students in their third grade classrooms? Additionally, we're going to begin meeting. I know Julie Newcomer has already begun outlining ways that she can support. And she's going to want to present that to staff and begin pulling together meetings. So there's already outlines and ideas of ways in which to support, but we're just now at the beginning phases of gathering information and inputs so that, you know, one idea, somebody emailed yesterday. They were saying, you know, what about doing learning inventories? And, you know, wouldn't that be great so that teachers really know how students are learning and are learners? And so, you know, ideas like that, bring them to the table, share them so that we can then account for those and build them into the learning that we're providing for our staff.
And I would just like to chime in. Going back to JB's slide about John Hattie's work, one of the other major impacts on student achievement that Hattie cites is collective teacher efficacy. So being able to bring our, initially it would be our third grade teachers together to work through how these services are going to be working for all students, but also specific for individual students' needs as well. Will really, again, because it will be our teachers guiding this work, that collective teacher efficacy has, I believe, I might get the numbers wrong, but I think it's like about a 1.34 on the Hattie scale of the impact that that has on students. So we know that continual work of teachers working together is critical and essential for student achievement.
I think the other piece that I would add in are the other faces that are popping in now who will be joining us for the Fundamental Five Report. And that is that, you know, this isn't about the three of us who presented tonight or about a superintendent. I mean, this is about, as we said, the leadership density and capacity of the entire organization. I'll go back to that. We have some incredible educators who are already meeting the needs of a wide range of students in our schools. And to Dr. Booby's point, you know, in some ways, we've already eliminated and stopped moving some of the students who are previously identified for a program. And we have been bringing the services. So some of it's scaling that and replicating it. But we're intentionally trying to segment this and move over time that it's not going to be a transition or change. And I do agree with you, Director Laurie, that they are one in the same in that. But ultimately, you know, it's about a better tomorrow, but that tomorrow doesn't have to be within 24 hours, that that is also a metaphor for ongoing change. And I don't know if any of our principals, I won't put you on the spot by calling any of you, but if you want to add into it as well, you can. And Director Din, I see your hand going up and I know you've seen this presentation now twice. So thanks for your patience while we catch everyone else up.
Problem. Thanks Fred, Jamie and Sue Ann for your presentation. I think the direction is really aligned with our value of inclusion. And when we go through this approach, we are seeing students with really diverse needs versus when we do programming, it's more discrete services, right? But here, you're able to really service students in their, all their, you know, intersectionality of strengths and needs. And I think one of the challenges is ultimately going to be in the implementation of, you know, teachers' development, getting them there and having enough. And it's going to take a lot of time to be able to provide the intensity of services to our students. And so things have to consider. But just, I know that you're, you know, we have a ways to go, but I like the direction of this conversation. But one of my things that I'm thinking about at this moment then, as people are probably hearing this for the first time and some of the concern might be, ultimately, our goal is to increase our services, our, you know, highly capable services, really to more, you know, to benefit, right? More students in that if we benefit one, it will ultimately benefit others. And how are we ensuring that the new identification process does not switch? Just like, okay, now we're identifying one group and now we're identifying another group, right? And so kind of be intentional about that process of, you know, who are we serving? And also I would be interested to hear more about the Torrance Test because I know if this is really ultimately based on equity and if we're thinking that before, the current testing did not fully capture the type of students that may benefit from our service. I wonder the Torrance Test, what is, what is the literature on it? In its gender or racial biases? And are we just picking another test and now we happen to pick another group of students? And so that would be something I would be interested in learning more about in the future. But I know that as a direction of providing comprehensive services to our students, you know, I think it's a powerful move.
In our Fundamental Five Report that you'll see a little later, I think the data has fortunately fallen off of a time when we had a tremendous gender gap in the way, in how we were identifying students for highly capable services. And in a couple of years in a row, it was even a little over two to one boys to girls or males to females as it was being measured. And through some intentional changes, we were able to close that gap. And you'll see that it's essentially eliminated now. It is important, Director Din, and we couldn't agree more that we're watching all of our assessments and how are they, what's the data telling us across race and ethnicity, gender and other subcategories as they're defined? So we certainly appreciate that absolutely.
Director Tucker?
I don't have a question, but I just have a few quick comments. One is I really applaud you guys for the changes in the identification process because I feel like it is really closing a number of gaps that have existed in the process for a long time. There have always been kids that didn't quite qualify by the numbers in sort of one category or the other, but who were, you know, as you say, like fonts of creativity and really would have benefited from some of the kind of more enriching activities in the previous program. So that's, I think that's fantastic and I think very much in line with our goals as far as inclusion goes. Number two, I think, again, nice job thinking and planning for the teacher support because it does seem like it's going to be more complicated than the current system in some respects. And again, as you say, like that transition will be a little bumpy, especially given that we'll be returning from a pandemic as this sort of, you know, ramps up. So, you know, given that everyone's going to be catching up from things that they've missed this last year, you know, how do you accelerate kids that are, that you're simultaneously trying to sort of remediate like what they've missed out on? So I just, it's, it's that, that will be a challenge, I think. And then just number three is to just please keep communicating with the community because like tonight is a great start. Everything that it sounds like you guys have planned is a great start. But I do think that the previous system with a sort of programmatic focus was very simple for people to understand. It was like kids take the test, they get in or they don't. They go to this different program. They might even go to a different school. They're using different curriculum or different books or, you know, whatever. Like that's a very simple thing to understand, kind of. And so this is much more nuanced and it's more individualized and it's much more comprehensive really and certainly more inclusive. But I think that the more you can communicate to the community about what that's going to look like, you know, what is a typical day going to be like in the classroom? Like what is going to be expected of a teacher who's managing kids at, you know, three different math levels? For example, the more you can get that out there, I think the faster families will feel comfortable with the change. So thank you for all your hard work on this.
Yeah, I, I think this is, this is an interesting time to do this as well from the respect that people's learning levels have changed radically as an outcome of the pandemic. Some people have thrived that never used to. Some people have fallen back who used to thrive previously. And there, it's, students are much more complex right now, I think, coming out of that and into, into the fall. So we will, I mean, clearly we'd be doing reassessments of students to give them the supports they need to get back on track in, you know, where they might be deficient and perhaps even ensure that they do progress well in areas where they, where they did well on their own during the pandemic. So it's going to be interesting. It's going to be a very diverse, any classroom you pick is going to be very diverse learning levels for the kids in it, no matter, no matter what we do here. So interesting, interesting time to transition, actually, that lines up well. I do, I do wonder how we're going to evaluate our program as we make, make progress throughout the years. How are we ensuring that the kids who previously would have been identified as highly capable are getting their needs and supports in this new, in this new program? The one challenge with the equity picture I see is we have talked about every child getting a year of progress in one year. So if a child is starting a little bit further ahead in math, they're still further ahead in math a year later, having achieved a year's worth of progress. And if they were behind in reading, they're, they've achieved a year's worth of reading, but they still may be a little behind than the average, however you want to do that assessment. How do we think about that in this, in this new model? Your equity thing seems to suggest everybody reaches the same level in a year.
I would say that it's, it isn't around every student reaching the same level in the year. So one thing, just to kind of clarify, I appreciate that question is, it goes back to the equity as every student is getting the services and what they need. And that, we already have some students who enter our classrooms, even in our third, fourth and fifth grade classrooms, where we have taken students literally out and put them into a separate classroom. And they have diverse needs in math or in language arts. And so it's really about a continuation of that. It's just instead of having a separate class of certain types of learners that they're in, they're in one class and we're all working together. But students would still be afforded those opportunities to grow and make that year's worth of growth because it's not about all getting to the same place, but rather thinking about where we are and then moving forward. The hypothesis is those who may not have been, had the same access to those instructional moments, they might grow even more or some might grow even more along with that because the expectations are changing for everyone and everyone has opportunities.
I know Brian hasn't gone yet, but I've got to follow up on this, if that's okay. So, so it's, I mean, it's, it's by law, we have to identify highly capable. So how is that, how are you going to make sure that the highly capable students are receiving the education that, and services that they are entitled to as identified highly capable students?
Jamie, want me to jump in? Thank you, Jamie.
Sure.
Okay. So just as we do, so we have a similar model right now with what we first called the PEP, the Primary Enrichment Program, which is now the Primary Enrichment Services. And so it's really continuing on with, with some of that model where we haven't been removing students from that, those services since the very beginning. And sometimes some of that extra support is pushed in or some of it's part through our professional development. So we will still be, as Director Prescott was saying, we'll still be identifying students through that. As, and as you said, President Laurie, you know, by law, we need to go through an identification process. Once we know who those students are, then that's about the ongoing monitoring of learning done in the classroom with our teachers, with our principals and our coaches, and really focusing in on that. And that's part of why, starting with third grade only. So students who are already in our current model will continue to matriculate through. And it's really focusing on that change for the students coming in from second grade. And so we can focus on that and then continue to make that happen. I think as you're all speaking to, there's a lot that we've all been going through and going on to do this in a full-scale model and say it's going to be all of third to eighth grade would be impossible. But we believe that in third grade, especially with the core of teachers that we have in there already and the ability to shift the coach, we're not adding a coach, but to shift the coach and really focus in, that's really where it can happen. Julie was first hired to work with the Primary Enrichment Program, now the Primary Enrichment Services. And so she's been coaching and mentoring along this. And it's now just focusing it even more for third grade.
I think one of the other pieces that's exciting and has excited me about our Primary Enrichment Services, because parents have reached out over time and said, oh, my student didn't qualify to receive Primary Enrichment Services. And the cool thing to be able to respond to the parent is we have the ability to provide your student with what they need because all of our teachers have access to Julie and to that support. And so if your student needs enrichment, acceleration, a different resource, a different approach to something, she's been there to partner with teachers and develop opportunities. And so I think this, this shift will provide all students, both those who qualify for highly capable services and those who may only qualify in one area or have a passion in an area where a teacher says, I need something, you know, more or different or a deeper sense of learning or understanding for this student. And there's going to be somebody who can partner with that teacher, can model, can co-teach, can co-plan and really come up with ways to meet individual student needs on an individual student level.
Elementary leaders on the call or whatnot? Anything we're missing on that or that you want to add to that? From your lens?
Well, I would say that being a school that has not had the program housed um in its facilities, we have these students in our classrooms all the time. And those who opted not to go to another school because they wanted to stay with their friends or stay in their neighborhood school. So we have had to meet their um needs um throughout the years. And um we differentiate as we always do with all students. And so I think that's the be the start of it. And I think that I've heard from my community since I started nine years ago, we want our kids to stay at Island Park, and why can't we figure out how to do this at our school? So I think that we have to remember that that oftentimes we've actually pulled families apart. Um, we've created a lot of stress and anxiety between siblings, those who have gotten into the program and those who haven't gone into the program. So I think we have to remember too that there is a social emotional factor that I think this will also address. I'm excited about that.
So I I would agree with David and Jamie and and Fred, I think you've done a great job presenting this already. Um, but I do want to reiterate, as David's saying, I mean, we have had situations where twins, one has gotten into the program and one has not. And those are really difficult um decisions then for a family to make, particularly if they are a family at a school that is not West Mercer or Lake Ridge. And every year when um the third graders are identified, we then get a slew of inter-district transfers for kindergarten, first and second grade students. And West Mercer and Lake Ridge, we can't accommodate all of those, we we don't have the room. And so families have been separated at schools.
Any other board questions on the superintendent report? We will keep you updated. Oh, Director Janine Upton.
I'll chime in. Um, if there's one thing I've learned, and I learned with Principal Best, and I she was a great learning partner in this, if there's one constant in education, it's change. So my family is six years into this process now, um, seven years into this process. We've made it halfway through, and I've got to say, I haven't met a teacher yet who hasn't been agile and been able to provide rigor and high expectations to the students I've witnessed in classrooms. We have extraordinary educators in our district, and I think this work is happening. Um, I think that formalizing this and and broader than highly capable services, as you look across to all the different um programs now shifting to services that will serve students at their neighborhood schools and be provided to them uh with professional development, with highly trained educators who have the tools and resources to do this. I think it's a beautiful marriage of inclusive practices and universal design for learning. Um, it's about ensuring that every child is met for who they are and recognized for who they are and the wonderful gifts that they bring with them and the challenges that they face um and providing those services right there with their classes, with their peers um as appropriate in a way that ensures that every child deserves rigor and every child deserves high expectations. Um, and in times of great change, um, that there's that wonderful moment for transformation, right? There's a metamorphosis metamorphosis, and that's what we're experiencing right now. Um, we've entered into a cocoon, a chrysalis, and we're emerging. Um, and this is a great opportunity to change. So um I want to share something that circulated a lot at the top of uh COVID-19 when all of us began going into our cocoon. Um, and I'll paraphrase it, I won't use all of it, but I think it's it's important to this. And it's from um Sonia Rene Taylor, and she said that we will not go back to normal. Normal never was. We are being given the opportunity to stitch a new garment, one that fits all of humanity and nature. So I applaud the district, um, everyone involved in this for stitching a new garment, one that fits every child uh and is appropriate to their needs and serves them, reflects who they are and who they dream to be, because that's what this is all about. So thank you, it's going to be really hard work, and I appreciate you tackling this momentous task.
That is a hard comment to follow, but I just have a question that I want to kind of throw out there, because I feel like um a lot of parents are probably wondering the same as me, how how it's going to work in kind of real time? For example, just taking the example of math, because that's 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 the subject where there's sort of like the clearest division among among sort of um levels of where kids are at in any given year. Um, how will that work? Like, will the teacher be teaching sort of to the middle and then do special stuff for kids that need more support or need more challenge? Or will will you guys be using? And I realize you may not have answers to these questions yet, but will, you know, for example, is there a possibility of using some of the technology that that we've put in place over the last year, you know, for kids to be learning at home, for kids to be working on, you know, more challenging math on the side? That kind of thing, like when, what's the general approach to how a classroom would be managed under this new system? And that's it, that's my question.
How about we come back and we bring Julie Newcomer with us? And we can talk in detail um about some of the the great ideas that are that are out there. And that if we come back next time, we will also have the opportunity to be gathering input um from people about things to consider. And so um I would love to come back and bring Julie um and a and and share with you some of those concrete ideas.
That sounds fantastic. Thank you very much.
And I would just, I think the corollary is um what we've seen from this group of educators in this district um over the last year that when we announced over the summer that we were going to be red remote, I think the community had those exact questions, what is it going to look like? How's this going to work? And um through the month of August and even other months, um, there was a tremendous amount of investment. And then there was innovation, and it wasn't perfect on the first day um for everyone. Um, but by the time we reached where we are now, um, some of those classes and the way that they've innovated is incredible. And then to think, we also thought, there's no way we can stream and teach kids in front of us. And yet the classes that I've been in and the conversations I'm having, there's been some frustrating ones. And um some are even on the attendees tonight of some conversations I had, but it's about progress, not perfection. And if I, in my heart, didn't believe that we had the educators to do this, there's no way I'd stand in front of you or sit in front of you this evening um and say that this is a good idea. But from the principals to our support staff and amazing um pair professionals and our teachers and everyone involved, I know we can do this as a district. And we will also be setting a tone for literally our entire state and certainly the Puget Sound region um who's not doing something similar to this. But we've got lots of colleagues across the country who are doing this, they're doing it successfully, and they're getting some amazing results for not just some students, but all students. Um, and I know we can, but I know it is going to be hard and and you've spoken to it tonight. Um, but I I'm certainly all in on this, and I think there's a lot of other people behind us. And it will be a lot of change and there'll be a lot of transition, but um our kids um are going to benefit from this.
I think that's a great way to conclude this section. And and um I was thinking the same thing that I was, and um, you know, looking at the hour and looking at the rest of our agenda, um, we have a long evening to go. And for me, examples, um, hearing examples and seeing them um in action is really crucial to understanding change and it not being so overwhelming. So I look forward to learning more, um, learn more. So uh, moving on, we're ready to move on, right?
Yes, we are ready for the Fundamental Five Report.
And oh, I was just going to say, moving on to Full Governance Process Monitoring, Board Policy, 1801, Fundamental Five, Equity and Inclusion. This is a level two review, and we have some of our favorite faces on screen with us who we haven't seen in a while or some of us haven't seen. So welcome and um take it away, whoever is leading us.
So I will just do a a quick kickoff that Level Two means we have our our quantitative data and our qualitative, which I know is really what um shows what is happening for students in classrooms. So we have um examples that each of our principals are going to present, but I know that Fred is um going to lead the way.
Thank you very much. Um, this, I believe, is our first time of monitoring this as Fundamental Five. Um, it's been Fundamental Seven, um, and so this is the the first time where it's Fundamental Five, though, as we wrote in the narrative to you this evening, um, the metrics um didn't necessarily change, but um our our school teams uh with our our administrators, teachers, support staff, as you saw in the in uh the qualitative component, um, there has been a tremendous amount of work in this space uh over the past year uh in spite of all of the challenges. The first part of the report, as you see, is a pretty robust uh overview of um the demographic profile, literally of our school district and um some of the changes over time. Um, it might make most sense for me to allow you to ask questions, because there are so many different components. But I did want to point out just a couple of things. Um, one is, um, and I'll share my screen quickly, just a change um that that we will see next uh beginning next school year, um, and it will roll out over the um next couple of years, um, actually, is really a change in the way that we will be um asking um our families to identify um to the degree that they want to. And so uh this will first start with all of our new enrollments and including our kindergarten families, and then uh we'll be updating this over time. But as you know, now, basically, right now, um, families select from um a variety of about seven different races or or racial or ethnic categories. Um, but now, going forward in the future, it will now give them opportunities to really identify um based on who they really feel they are, so that it isn't um a family who might identify um as black African American, but now there's lots of different ways for that family to identify. And so that's a new change that's coming and starting. Um, this was a a big push at the state. Um, and so I just wanted the board and and community to to know about that as we're moving forward, because as we're thinking about uh Fundamental Five, um, we have uh families who certainly the way that we um categorize them now doesn't always tell their whole story. Um, with that, then, um, I know that there was
Sorry, just real quick, Fred. Uh, on that form, I just just noticed it says Asian Indian as opposed to Indian for the Asian space. I I just, I mean, originally, Indian was Asian Indian by default. It's ju- just uh an FYI from a from a cultural uh sensitivity perspective, I I'm not sure how that should fall, but I think most people identify as Indian, not Asian Indian.
And what I can do with that is, I don't know how set in stone all of these are from the state on that, but I will take that note, Director D'Souza, and I can certainly pass it back through Giovanna, um, who's been part of this process along receiving
That sounds great.
So thank you.
I, along that same line, um, I I appreciate so much of what is in this collection form. And then I look at white. And I I think there's a miss here, and I know that it's not our district, I know this is coming from the state. I don't get offended on these kind of things too often, it's offensive to me. Um, I I would describe myself in so many other ways than white. And, you know, how many generations back do we go? Um, I mean, I would say, I I would certainly categorize myself as American. And, you know, if we're if we're talking about color of skin, that's one thing, but and that's what white is to me. But um, I don't know, I, there's a miss here, and I'm really, I I I think we're doing a disservice. Like I said, I think there's way more benefits to this than than, that's a huge miss on this. And I think that that's going to ruffle some feathers, it's ruffling mine, and mine don't usually get ruffled on things like this. Um, and I appreciate the self-identification. Um, but, you know, I mean, do we go back from our answer, my ancestors, you know, I'm like fourth generation American, but what about where, you know, my people five generations ago came? Like, I don't know, I just, I don't, this isn't making sense to me.
I will add that as well, Director Laurie, for sure, um, on that input from there. You're right, it's not our, you know, we didn't come up with these as a school district, um, but they'll be on the data information forms for our for our families. And so if uh we will certainly advocate it and and send that feedback in.
One thing also, Fred, um, Deborah, I think they they start with the census race and ethnic uh category first. And then what they went in was really use the community to um try to identify the most representative in uh Washington and America. Um, so if you look, then you see, you know, Asian, you also see just Asian, and then you can. So one of, uh, so what Deborah's bringing up and what I'm thinking about is, when you look at this, does it make intuitive sense on how to fill it out if we're just giving folks this form? Because then, you know, this whole thing with uh even black and African Americans, right? Uh, what kind of associations with that? And and there's there's value in just letting people identify themselves. And I would say, like, in the Asian category, do they just stop at Asian? Is it pick one and pick more? Uh, so I think maybe, um, I don't know the direction that goes with this, but maybe it would be helpful for us to maybe provide some direction for our parents to uh know the ability to answer, you know, kind of like the range, and that they can just fill out as much as they want or whatever. I think there should be some directions.
And that that is part of it, you're seeing the form as a PDF. The way the system actually works is after they select something, then they get, then it narrows their choices down to something else. So the software is a little bit more um nuanced than this. This is just to give you a snapshot of all of it together.
Thank you.
I do, um, I kind of echo what other people have been saying. And if we're if we're bound to those categories because they're the census categories or because that's what's required by the state, I think we should say that, like, these are the categories taken from the census. This isn't like Mercer Island School District's interpretation of what all the possible ethnicity in the world and ethnicities in the world are, you know? So I think it would be helpful to say that. Um, I also do think, though, that, like, given how much in the schools teachers really encourage kids to explore their family history and to learn about, you know, like where their families came from and sort of celebrate each other and so forth, it is really jarring to just have, like, white be the only option, right? It's like, you know, what about people who are from Scotland or from Wales? Like, that's as valid as being from, you know, Bosnia versus Herzegovina, right? So that, if it's possible to change, that seems like something that, whatever, sorry, I don't know how to say that. But but, um, not whatever, but but, um, I think that would be more inclusive, really, and yeah.
And you've got the multiracial issues as well, too, and it didn't seem to have a checkbox for that.
Though it does say, check as many boxes as apply.
I think uh we were talking about the software narrowing you down, but
Oh, yeah, good point.
Versus the PDF.
Right.
Yeah.
That was my question, it's is how does it capture those who identify with two or more races? Um, I think one of the faults of that checkbox in the past has been that many students um get lost in that shuffle and are not identified um as a critical um demographic. I think we see that happen a lot um both in uh Latinx or um Hispanic groups as well as Native American groups and Alaska Native groups. Um, and then where we've, we are unable to capture that data in a meaningful way that can add to additional services, grant writing and and other things that would be appropriate. So I I would be concerned in how we can thoroughly capture those with uh who would identify with two or more races.
I have those notes, and I will, we'll see Giovanna actually tomorrow, so I will add that to the list.
Thank you.
Um, the other component, uh, just to draw your attention to on the Fundamental Five, um, thank you, Director Janine Upton, on page eleven, um, there was a description about um the impact and and really kind of the change and really dramatic shift in discipline um data from year over year. And I forgot to finish a thought there, so thank you for pointing that out. So that was corrected. Um, so if you had read the report prior to last evening, um, you might have recognized that as well. The main point I was to make is that um two reasons for a significant change in the discipline data year over year. One is the full um, the full implementation of um of fifteen forty-one, which was passed in two thousand sixteen, went fully into effect last school year. And that really um was the final changes to how students are excluded from from school with, which is inclusive of with which is inclusive of removals through suspensions, either long term, short term, or expulsions. And so that was one. The other thing is, we tend to see more or uptick, if you will, in behavior in the spring versus the fall and the winter. And when we went in completely virtual last spring, that really held that variable constant. And so while we had discipline, it wasn't to the same degree. So that's really why you saw quite a bit of a drop off in terms of even reporting out numbers of suspensions in those removals. So with that, let me just open it up to maybe your discussion or how we can weigh into some of the quantitative data. Because I really want to give a chance for you to talk to principals too about the qualitative pieces. I know that those really add the rich story behind what we've tried to do to make strides toward achieving this particular fundamental. And some of it may come up, and that's great, too. Why don't we go into some of the the qualitative pieces? Why don't we start with elementary, then go to middle and high school? And we can feather in any conversation that you'd like to have as a board. If some of your questions do come up around the the quantitative, but let's go into the qualitative components. So elementary.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name's Megan Isaacson. I'm the Assistant Principal at Northwood and Island Park Elementary. It's nice to see all your faces, and I've been honorably selected as our representative to share a little bit today. And hopefully, I'll keep it brief so you can have time to ask questions of us. Looking at this fundamental, we all wholeheartedly agree. It's really a part of all that we do. It's not apart from anything. And we've we've really worked, especially this year while I've been here, and I know in years past, to layer equity work into everything. It's not a separate group. It's not a separate initiative. It's part of the lens that we use to see all of our systems and decision making across the school. So number one, that's just a core, like, lifeblood value that everything is umbrellaed underneath. And I think what we've tried to do at the elementary level is approach diversity, equity, and inclusion work on multiple levels. One being that personal level where there's a lot of reflection and dissecting your own identity and who you are and what you bring to the classroom as an educator or support staff. And then at the community level, at the whole school level, what our teams bring as a PLC, our equity teams, our SST teams, all of the teams that are working to support students and all of their varying needs. And then at the whole, at the system level, so across our schools, how are we really aligning how we build our practices around discipline, how are we aligning our, how we build our practices around hiring? How are we aligning equity into our practices of using data for our for identifying student needs? So I think there's a lot of layers to our equity work, and it's really just ingrained and continue to, we're continuing to grow and ingraining that in what we do. So we've listed some of the examples of that work in this narrative. I'm sure that you've you've had a chance to read, or if you haven't, I'm not going to read for you, but just to kind of list them off real quick. We've been working closely with the PTA and their Diversity Equity Inclusion Initiative. A lot of literature and texts that we're adding to our library and classrooms to support culturally responsive and and identities that look like our students. We have classes, learning and talking about segregation in schools and other really pertinent events that help students see a part of their world and engage in civic education. We've also, we build a social emotional learning into everything, and and our students are really seen and valued for who they are. Our elementary schools are doing the kindness challenge. We're doing lunch groups and book studies and and bringing kids in that don't normally interact with each other from different grades and classes and giving chances to make those spaces. And then just overall, just the teams, the teams that we have across all of our schools are leading in that equity work. We're doing a Black Lives Matter in schools, weeks of action over at Island Park. Shout out to that team. Land acknowledgement from our student leaders and bringing those resources out to the teachers from a student led group. So just amazing, incredible work. And I'm going to wrap it up so we can close our elementary thread and see if you have any questions of us. Thank you.
Director Lurie, do you want to have everyone present and then open it up as one big robust conversation? Or would you rather directors ask questions of elementary?
Anyone have any preferences? Let's have you guys just keep going, and then we'll do conversation at the end.
Perfect, middle school.
Thank you, Megan, for setting that scene about how the whole, how fundamental five is just so fully integrated into every single thing we do. And I couldn't agree more with that. And I feel like this year in particular, our staff at Islander is on a journey of really understanding our our personal biases, understanding what we bring to the table for our kids every day and how we can continue to learn and grow and be what every one of our kids needs from us. And I just want to start by thanking our staff as a whole. I continue to be so amazed by each person and what they bring to our students every day and their willingness to learn and change and edit and and be honest with our kids about our journeys. And so I just want to make sure to recognize how incredible they are. And I, the piece that I really want to spotlight is our JUST work this year. And it was kind of created this summer with a small group of staff trying to brainstorm how to bring sustainable change and growth to our staff. And I want to call out in particularly Lita Johnson and Emily Mills, who have been instrumental in creating and carrying out much of our work that we're doing this year. So our JUST, which is what it stands for, is Justice and Understanding Support Team. We have three kind of levels of that team. One is a community based level that also has staff on it. One is a staff team and one is a student team. And all of them are working together and separately to consider how best we can move forward. Right now, the initiatives that each group is working on, our JUST community is working on listening sessions for our community. And we're very excited. We are, our statement is that all our students and families matter to us, and we're hoping to learn more about the experiences, hopes, and concerns of our underrepresented community members as we learn and grow together as a school community. So really looking to understand and hear the voices and the experiences people have had, both at our school and in our community at large, so that we can continue to value and change and edit to make sure that we are being what our families and our kids need. Our JUST guides, which is again our staff group that is working in partnership with our PLC leaders and with the integration of our curricular changes. But our JUST guides just yesterday had a meeting, and we were looking at feedback from students posted on the Students of MI site. And we, we, Lita pulled a whole bunch of examples of students talking about racism and bias experiences that they have had either directly in the middle school or in our community. And so we spent time together as a group, really thinking about how could we be more proactive on one side? And then how do we have authentic conversations with our kids on the backend? When the next incident, when and if the next incident arises? And then that's going to come to our PLC teams and think about how that integrates into the work that we're doing in our classrooms. And then our JUST students are just amazing and continue to do so much. They are, they have produced produced videos, they managed our Black Lives Matter week. And currently, they are working in collaboration with a high school group called E-Car. And they are planning to host a community discussion about bias coming up in April. So just so much, so much going on at the middle school, and I'm just really proud of all of the work.
And Bella Hartman, who you heard from earlier on tonight, and the two students, that's a direct connection to what Mary Jo just mentioned, is that work that they're doing. So kind of bring in that full circle. To our high school.
Thank you. Again, to reiterate, this is pervasive work. One of the things that frames my thinking with this is a thought that part of our job is to make sure that we're accurately representing where we really are as a school. And part of our job is to uphold what we can be. Really, the bulk of the job is resolving those two differences. And the other side that is a perspective is this has to be work where we have buy in at least, and hopefully commitment from large amounts of people, students, faculty, and staff. It cannot be one person. It cannot be one student, it cannot be one administrator, it cannot be one teacher. So as we look at this, there are really three things that I think you'll notice that are approaches in our presentation. One is respect, support, and outreach for student voices, specifically for underrepresented groups. And to make sure that whether we agree or disagree with those voices, they're upheld and honored. Secondly, that we use that voice to actually work toward tangible action. And that doesn't mean that we can fix it one day. It doesn't mean that we turn the key in a program and change it on a dime. But it means that we take tangible steps to make sure that we have trust with all of our groups in our community and what we're doing on a day by day basis. You saw one of those indications with Bella and Samantha, there are three other students who worked intimately with our Islander Hour program. There are other student groups, two major student groups that are also working with them for programming through Islander Hour as one focus. But really, the deep commitment work that we're doing and needs to continue is the work that we're having with students, meeting with departments and teachers to develop and further, because Social Studies has already done so much work on this, but to further look at different points of view, different events, different historical perspectives in what we teach and the voices that we teach. The other thing that I want to mention is I was really concerned as we looked at what's happened with different student populations over COVID. So we did, and this is on a very broad scale, but I'll give you a few data points, and I have more when you like. One would be during from March twenty twenty, March tenth specifically to March tenth, twenty twenty one. We actually had an eleven percent increase in As, minus eighteen percent change in Bs, a sixteen percent increase in Cs, a minus six percent in Ds. But here's the big one. We had a thirty-seven less failing grades this year than last. And I'll grant all of those variables, but we could be in a much, much worse spot. And when we look across different student groups, there is no significant change or indication that any one student group is underperforming compared to the others from the beginning of COVID to now. And I'm really proud of our teacher and student work on that. We've also had an increase in student, a forty percent increase in the number of students who have ninety percent attendance. Attendance is certainly different now, but it shows the work of teachers and our staff outreach into kids and commitment of our families sticking with this. So again, welcome questions on this. There are several examples of this through it, and thank you for your time.
I don't comment. I would say I don't have any questions. I frankly am sitting here in awe of the work that you do and that your staff does. This year has been overwhelming for each one of us. And the fact that you are managing a parent community, a teaching community, and a student community in a way that you are encouraging growth and and leadership, I I'm just in awe. So, you know, this is one of my favorite reports to read. And I just, I I'm sitting here, I, you know, read it and then looking through it again today, just with my mouth open. Because we are all so overwhelmed with everything that we've had to tackle this year, that to still be doing this work. You know, what what Fred said at the end of of our last report was, you know, couldn't agree with more. I know that teachers are feeling the brunt of all of these changes. And to know that you are all leading them. I'm just, just a big thank you for continuing to do the hard work that's supporting our students. And it is not, I mean, thank you.
I'll say ditto to Deborah's statement as well. But I I'd also like to add, I appreciate so much all the student committees that are being created around this. And I think that that really means a lot, that we've got a diversity of people developing the, you know, the the plan for helping other people understand these issues. I mean, I I'm not representative of Indians myself alone. No, there, you, it's good to have a diverse group talk about, I'll just choose India for myself and bring in many, many different viewpoints of the same thing. It is, you, you don't want to stereotype whites, you don't want to stereotype African American culture, and you don't want to stereotype Indian culture. So I really appreciate that the just the number of communities, student community groups you have that are doing this work that think about, think about these things from different perspectives. So thank you very much. I know that makes it slower perhaps and much more difficult. But I really do think that the output is is much greater and brings a stronger understanding amongst each other, too. So I I appreciate that. And even culturally, we have our own biases as well. And, you know, only in the USA are we really trying to understand and eliminate some of those types of things and understand all these different cultures. So I think that helps all the groups. So thank you very much for the hard work being done in this space.
I just wanted to also add my thanks and to say it is wonderful to see this coming kind of from the bottom up, from the students as well as the teachers, and hopefully from the top down as well. So there should just be like a little thin sandwich left in the middle that can get squished a lot. So thank you.
So what I'm, yeah, I love the qualitative data and seeing all the wonderful things that we're doing. My kids do come home and talk about them, and I get excited about programming as well. And I'm also looking at the ESS data. And I'm just curious about how do we dive into this data? Because Walter, when you said that the work that we do has to be really pervasive permeate through all levels. Because, you know, when we look at this data, we don't really know if it's about climate, if it's about a curriculum, whether it's about representation. And we need all three of those things to make sure that students are feeling like they're being celebrated. And so I'm just curious about one, some of the data where we see, you know, staff thinks that we are doing a lot of celebration, and then the students don't, you know, it's not alignment. So as I'm curious about, as you're reading the data, one, how are you, you know, talking about them and seeing where the growth or where the decrease come from, right? So we know where to continue. You know, did the JUST program, did it help to make students feel more inclusive? Because if that's the case, we're putting money in there, right? And if it's something else is we're doing is not working, we have to reassess. So I I think it's good to know exactly where to put our resources. And then the second question is, what is our, what is our goal? Do we have a goal for ourselves? You know, are we happy with fifty, sixty percent? Or next year, are we aiming for a five percent increase or ten? And then, you know, I I don't know these data in relation to national data, that students are just kind of blah, you know? And my fourteen year old, you ask him anything, he probably skewed the data. He probably like blah to everything, that's just because he's fourteen. So is that a normal? Or is it truly a reflection of what we're, you know, not doing or doing it maybe not in the right place?
Let me start with the global piece, and then principals, you can weigh in with what you do at the at the more micro level in the schools. As we had kind of shown in with the fundamental four discussion, I believe it was at a study session, or it might have been your last regular meeting. We do have the ability to look and compare ourselves to other districts. And it had kind of that, there was the the line graph that you saw on it was where did we relate to other districts who were either high performing districts or other districts that took the measure? So we do look at some of those components and where are we trending relative to that? The the research on this certainly shows a drop off from elementary to middle school to high school in in percent positivity almost across the board. So that's a pretty similar trend that they do see, not just on Mercer Island, but. Um, not just on Mercer Island, uh, but others there. So we do look at it, um, in terms of, you know, what does this look like for others? To answer the question about what are the goals? I think that really goes back to the school improvement plan goals and some of the school improvement plan goals contain some of these indicators. Um, but it's not about trying to move the needle on every single one at the school improvement level. I think the idea of the monitoring reports over time is that we're monitoring to make sure that we're not seeing drastic decreases, or if we are seeing drastic increases. As you said, that's where we should drive resources. A reminder just for everyone is that this information is from 1920 in the qualitative section regarding the EES. We're just now getting ready to, uh, or excuse me, this year we won't be having that data. So it's going to lag a little bit. So things that we're doing right now in those qualitative stories aren't going to show up necessarily in those quantitative changes right now. So we're going to be a little bit off sequence there. Principals, things you do in the buildings though, um, to kind of, um, bring to life some of the data.
Um, I, I can just speak to some of the things that we've done, uh, over the years that very, very, depending on what kind of our focus is, is that we might use the EES data as a jumping off point and to inform some of our broader school improvement planning. Um, but then some of our, um, subgroups use that to dig a little deeper to inform some of their work. So an example of that is that our PBIS group, um, has then, you know, kind of developed a more student friendly uh, survey to dive a little bit deeper and to get some feedback in a more, uh, you know, kindergarten, first grade, second grade uh, type of language so that we can take some of the ideas from the EES, dig a little bit deeper and look more across all of our um, grade levels. And then, um, when we learn things from that, then the PBIS team can use that to inform some of the work that they're going to do. So that's just one example.
You asked about goals, Director Dan. One of the things that really during COVID, well, one of the things I'm looking forward to beyond COVID is the ability to, to look at some stable data. Uh, to view what are the impacts over time. Um, I know that this district has used other, other, uh, surveys mechanisms. I, I worked a good bit with one in particular uh, that does look at students' experience and looked at the experience with regards to where they ever uh, discriminated against at school, what were their perceptions of inclusion by teachers and fellow students? Did they see racism or ethnicity as a problem in their school? And so the short answer, uh, is I, I want us to look at that larger data over time. And right now this is probably not the best time to do it, but the goal would be that we see a direct programmatic increase. I mean, that's, that's the obvious part of the response to your question, I think.
Well, and just, you know, not really even thinking about the data part, but our just students created a, a vision or, you know, a mission statement. And really the essence of that statement is they want each student to be seen, valued, heard, um, and lifted up, you know? And, and ultimately that's what we want from all, everything that we're trying to do is that each kid walks away from IMS. And that's hard at a middle school, middle school is such a crazy time, but we really want that for our kids and our kids want that for themselves. So we owe it to them, no matter what our data is saying, to keep working to make sure that we're, we're giving them what they deserve.
I would like to point out to the board that for the first time on the qualitative report, Fred reached out to other departments to include a, a reflection on their work within, um, fundamental five and how it's impacting throughout the system. So it really is a systemic initiative that it, um, is impacting everyone who is working with our students. You might not, um, see students every single day, but your work still impacts them. And so I wanted to point out our maintenance and operations reflection as well as our, our transportation reflection on how those departments are are looking and doing the work for fundamental five as well.
And I can bring in Tony and Patrick right now on cue there, uh, with anything they want to add.
I think the only thing I would add to the M and O reflection, um, would be that, you know, the, the multilingual and multicultural identities of the M and O team that, you know, the, the highest standards of respect and inclusion are a real point of pride for our department. I think it, it, it does speak loudly, uh, when you watch the group work as a team and, um, it's, um, yeah, it, it, it really is a great group. So I think the, the reflection pretty much spells it out, but, um, that's, that's about all. I'll throw out your for tonight.
I think, uh, it was been fun since the high school and middle school have gotten back into a more similar schedule. I've been able to actually get out of the office this last, uh, two weeks and go and watch the buses as they come into the schools or watch them as they're picking up kids. And it is just always thrilling for me to watch the bus drivers light up as the kids come on and have little conversations with them. And, and, and these, you know, you have bus drivers who are over six foot four, talking to a very small child and just seeing both of them light up and just, it's been really fun. So, uh, and, and the bus drivers, almost all of them are making sure that almost every child is uh, a little conversation when they get off the bus. And so I'm really proud of the drivers.
Can I ask a question on the, uh, elementary fifth grade math program? Um, on, on the program is, it says we've merged the general and accelerated math tracks into one track. And so in one classroom, we'll be serving, um, kids from both, uh, both progressions. I'm, I'm curious how that's been working and how we are going to track the progress of, of those kids, you know, over, over time as they get into the sixth grade perhaps. Have they, have they achieved the same goals as the previous generation who had a separate program? Or not? And I think that kind of relates back to our previous discussion around, you know, the, the high cap program. So it'd be, it's, it's another interesting data point to see how it's working and how effective we've been.
Like, I can share more on that if you, if you have a particular question, but, um, I think when we did talk about high cap earlier, I, I did have in mind, like, our teachers are already doing that, um, across the system. And certainly we're seeing that this year with the fifth grade and, um, really offering accelerated and high quality, rigorous, challenging opportunities to all students. All of our teachers are trained in fifth and sixth grade math standards and curriculum and are doing an incredible job with differentiating across that, um, that spectrum to serve every single kid out, uh, in terms of what they need. And we're use, we're utilizing a variety of data points right now, including our classroom based assessments or SBA interim, our Ames web math. So we're using multiple data points to narrow in on where kids are at and what they need to, to move forward. But, um, it's been a really successful move so far and what we've seen in the data. Um, and I think even greater than that is students' perceptions of their own mathematical identity and who they are and how they feel about math. Um, and I think we were anticipating or hoping for that outcome and not just seeing it in, in numbers and scores. And we are, we're seeing how much, um, when you are given that high bar and your peers around you, um, that heterogeneous group that pushes you and, and you have what you need in other groups. There's so much flexible learning happening that students are really, um, really loving mathematics. And that's what we want them to do leaving fifth grade and going into the middle school, um, which we've been working really closely with as well to make sure they're assessed in, in the right, um, classes and programs, uh, or services that are being offered in sixth grade when they arrive there.
And Director, just add, I'm sorry, just to add to that, I mean, just from anecdotal, um, conversations I've had with parents whose students were in the accelerated math in previous years. They're very happy with this new model as they said that they did see that there were some gaps and holes when they only had a sixth grade accelerated math experience.
Yeah, I, I like the idea. It's a tough decision for a child, fifth grader to have to pick one of these programs. And there's always, you know, mid-flight they might want to change. And I think this makes it a lot, a lot more flexible learning environment. Um, so I, I, I'm glad it's working out, uh, on, in a positive direction. I think, I think this certainly is better for kids to be able to decide, oh, I understand X fractions easier and let's go accelerate for a little bit and fall back if there's something I'm not understanding. So this, and it makes a lot of sense. So thank you.
Any final questions or comments? Just trying to keep an eye on the time.
I'll try to be brief. Um, uh, I, I see great strides being made, uh, as you look at these and, and there's still room for improvement in, in areas. Um, absolutely. And there always will be room for improvement in, in, in this particular fundamental. I, I just, so first, when we look at, um, whether students feel celebrated, um, whether they feel creative, um, where they're able to express themselves, um, or to feel a part of the community. And as we see that wane as they get older, as they progress through school, um, oftentimes the data shows that. Um, and that's not necessarily uncommon. And, um, I suspect that a large portion of that has to do with the fact that as we get older, there's more of an expectation or pressure to conform or assimilate, um, especially to dominant culture. Um, and so it's, it's the work that has to be done to break that mold and that pattern. Um, in order for kids to continue to flourish and take chances and take risks and, um, and be willing to be embarrassed, especially in front of their peers, which gets harder and harder as they get older, as we get older, you know, it's the same thing here. Um, it's difficult to take a risk on a board and have a really vulnerable conversation in the public eye because you risk embarrassment, you risk saying the wrong thing. Um, and yet you have to take that risk. Um, so I really want to commend all across the district. Um, the partners, not only administrators and educators and our students, but also our community members, the work that's happening with the PTAs in our DEI work and those groups that have formed around there, the just work that's happening, the work that's happening at the high school where we're seeing natural leaders within our school community, students who are taking this work and are embedding it. And, um, it's, it's a flywheel in, in motion. I know Superintendent Koloski and with the Superintendent Equity Advisory Committee has really been working to expand knowledge and vocabulary around these subjects of equity and diversity and inclusion and justice. And, and more and more people are getting swept into that. And so each year I see that flywheel turn and the group get bigger and the voice get louder and I see students getting bolder and bolder. Um, and so, uh, a couple of things with that is I think the more we embrace our youngest students and allow them to express themselves in their culture and share that, uh, with pride in the communities, um, the more they'll be able to shine. Um, and an example of that is Stella Keating, who's a student out of Tacoma. Um, and I could share this because she's been very public about this, um, just testified in Congress. Um, she's the first transgender student to testify in Congress. Um, and it was for the Federal Equality Act. And she talked about the fact that what was necessary for her to progress was a sense of security and a sense of being loved and recognized. And she spoke to us today in our, our networking call through WADA. And she just kept emphasizing the fact that she felt loved and recognized and safe. And so she was able to shine. And I think it's so important that you continue this work, uh, throughout. And if we continue this work and continue to build that coalition across our community in a climate where we embrace each child and celebrate their strengths and their amazing background and their culture, and they feel brave to express that um, in how they dress and the food that they bring to school and how they speak and the things that they geek out about, you know, and get excited about and risk getting excited about something. I think we're going to see those numbers shift. So I just want to say, I recognize that work is continuing to happen year after year. It's present in the school improvement plans, it's present in this fundamental, and we see these anecdotal stories. And we see those numbers moving. And this is a hiccup, it's going to be hard to track these numbers right now. So I think we really need to lean into that qualitative data. And then, uh, two final things is, um, when it comes to the grades and a lot of things that happen, I'm sure there'll be community questions about grades and the improvement in grades because there were waivers made and, uh, some things have been relaxed through COVID, especially last year. Um, but something else that everyone's been leaning into is engagement. Instead of conformity, uh, it's about, been about engagement, right? And are students engaged? It's not about attendance. But how are you showing that you're engaged in the class, engage with your community beyond standard measures? And, and your, the flexibility being provided to students to demonstrate their mastery of knowledge, I think is extraordinary. And it's a huge silver lining to this whole thing that hopefully will carry forward. Um, and with that, and our great student leaders, I'm wondering if maybe the students from Northwood, uh, might come and do, uh, the student council of Northwood might do a workshop with the school board in land acknowledgement. So that we could maybe finally take the step as a board to work that land acknowledgement is to a constant celebration um, of a land, because of course, we are broadcasting from the, the native lands of indigenous people. Um, to people who are sitting on the native lands of indigenous people who have been the caretakers of these lands since time immemorial and continue to be. And we owe it to those students and communities to honor them for that. I got it in. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, Brian.
Any final questions or comments? All right, this is, um, an action item. Uh, I'm looking for a motion with regards to compliance.
I move refine the superintendent in compliance with, uh, fundamental five.
Second.
Any further discussion? Motion is, uh, to fund superintendent compliance with fundamental five. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Any, any opposed? Any extensions? By vote of five to zero, uh, the superintendent is found in compliance with fundamental five equity and inclusion. Uh, thank you everyone, um, for joining us tonight. You're welcome to stay. We have a lot more to do. Um, speaking of which, uh, we are at three B, uh, board policy 1800OE1 fundamental four. And, um, we still have other things, um, that might take some time. So I, it's eight thirty, we've been going for quite some time. I want to offer a break. And I also want to see if we want to modify our agenda in any way. That normally I would say, do we want to push fundamental four or, you know, three B to the next meeting? But that will, the impact would be that it would push, um, our monitoring of fundamental four out because right now it's scheduled in May and our administrative team, our leadership team needs those monitoring, indicators in order to, uh, prepare a report. So that has pretty significant income on, or impact income, pretty significant impact on, um, people's schedules that have already probably been scheduled. So I just want to keep that in mind. Um, why don't we think about it and take 10 minutes? Does that, do we need time? Does anyone? I'm not seeing anyone jump up and down. Do we need a break?
I need 10 minutes. I have to go put a kid to bed.
We will take 10 minutes, we will come back at eight forty. So think about how we're going to proceed and then I'll get direction when we get back. Thanks, everyone. I think we have everyone, right? Yes. All right. Superintendent Kloski has a suggestion for us.
As to, I hate to say this when I see, um, Nova waiting so patiently there and has been waiting for a while now. But, um, fundamental four is a second reading on, on the metrics. And so if you did choose to table it, move it to your, um, April meeting, it would push out the, um, the monitoring of that. But Fred and I had a brief, for lack of a better term, run to the restroom conversation about that would probably, doing the report later wouldn't be a bad thing because it would allow, um, some potential metrics that we're going to suggest to actually be a part of the report if it is done, um, later in the year, which would actually be your late June meeting. So it could be, we always do a regular meeting in June before we go into our, twice a year study session. So we could certainly make it as part of, um, the study session. And then part of that study session is going to have to be a conversation around the calendar for next year, where are these fundamentals going to fit in the year? So that, that is a suggestion is if you moved this out, you could, um, spend a little more time on it in April. I looked at the agenda. It does, it's not as, as full. And then it would push the monitoring out to June if you're willing to wait till June to have that monitoring.
Thoughts? That was my recollection of the April meeting too, was that we had some more space, Nova. I'm sorry.
I think that's a good suggestion.
Oh.
We've got some media, we've got some media items. So I think it's a good suggestion to push it.
What's all this sorry Nova stuff? Okay?
Tell the better end regardless. That's it. That, that's the only difference. You haven't done substantial work. So, and I think Nova probably already missed bedtime.
Right. I, I got to put her to bed tonight. So it worked.
Right on. Um, anyone opposed to putting this off? I think we've got a bunch of stuff to, still to cover. Yeah. Okay. All right. So do we have to do that by four? We don't have to do formal motion, do we? To bump it to, well, we do? Okay, so I
In the agenda item.
To modify the agenda or to remove that from the agenda?
A move that we modify the agenda and move, um, section three B, Board Policy 1800 OE1, Fundamental Four to the next regular meeting.
Seconded.
Second.
Any, uh, discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Uh, motion passes five zero. We will move the, uh, three B, excuse me, to the next, um, meeting. And thank you, everyone, for your understanding. Um, so then we will move to Board Policy 1800 OE11, Facilities and Capital Projects, which is a level one uh, monitoring. So I am looking for a motion.
I move, we find the superintendent in compliance with OE11, Facilities and Capital Assets.
Second.
Any discussion? The motion is to find the superintendent in compliance of OE11, Facilities and Capital Assets. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? The vote by, by a vote of five to zero, find the superintendent in compliance of OE11, Facilities and Capital Assets. Uh, thank you. And moving on to, for a Board Policy 1800 OE7, Financial Administration Resolutions.
Sorry, interrupt, Deborah. Um, it's Facilities and Capital Projects.
What did I say?
Assets.
I read it from the monitoring report. I read it from the monitoring report. Monitoring report says
I'm sorry, I'm looking at the agenda item. Okay.
No, 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 you're right. So I just want to make sure that the monitoring report and the agenda are matched. So whichever one, I, I could look it up, but whichever
Says assets. It's the agenda item that's different. So, okay, nevermind.
Okay. So just want to make sure that our monitoring report is correct. And I'm getting nods that it is. So thank you. Yes, the monitoring report is correct. Um, all right, we good? Okay. Um, Board Policy 1800 OE7, uh, Resolution Number 693 and 694, Reduced Educational Support Program Staff, uh, presented by staff. This is a separate reading. We are going to address these separately. 693, um, corresponds to certificated staff and, um, 694 responds to classified staff, um, or classified positions. Um, I want to start off by saying that Mercer School District, the leadership team and the Board of Directors, and I hope I can speak for the community, values our staff, who support our children every day more than frankly anything. We have all, become a part of this community because of the services that our teachers and staff provide for our kids and therefore our family. We could not raise our kids without our staff and the value we place on that is at its highest level. Um, unfortunately, as part of, um, changing times, and I mean just kind of cycles over time, um, it means we need to take a hard look at our staffing levels and our, um, and our budget and making sure that they are aligned. And, um, we knew this was coming and unfortunately the pandemic kind of brought it a whole lot faster um, and more sudden than we anticipated. Um, this resolution that we are addressing right now is for the authority for our superintendent to make reductions. The, we are still hoping that our enrollment will increase. We are hoping that we will see more federal and state funding than we are anticipating. And, but due to, um, we have specific timelines we have to follow due to the RCWs, our statutes and our, our contracts with our, um, staff that we have to follow and do, um, in certain timelines. So we have to decide whether or not the board is going to give the superintendent the authority to make any reductions that she feels is appropriate. Um, well, within, within what's being presented to us. And, and that process has to start now. We are all hoping that either through natural attrition, um, that these numbers will change. We're hoping through budget changes that these numbers will change. Um, but we also know that there are priorities that we need, um, to put in place for our students as we start this recovery in the pandemic that's going to shift our focus and shift their needs. And as we have consistently stated for the, especially for the last several years, students are the priority. And I know that a deep look was taken at, um, programming and services that we are providing to our students as we help them start to begin to recover from, um, the traumatic, um, experiences that they've, um, that they've experienced in the last year. I know Superintendent Kloski will make it clear that, um, these are superintendent decisions. It is, uh, obviously with, um, speaking with her staff, um, who are the subject matter experts. Um, but the buck stops with the superintendent and the buck stops with the board. Um, it is our ultimate duty to make sure that this, um, that our budget is fiscally sound. Um, and one of the ways that we have to do that is to right-size our district. And so with that in mind, I know lots of board directors are going to have things to say. I just want to set the table for what we're discussing here and where these recommendations are coming from. Fortunately, I was kind of chuckling to myself. I don't know if it's an inappropriate chuckle, but, um, you know, in a lot of public education systems, the lead learner is not the highest paid, um, employee. Fortunately, our district has its priorities in line, meaning like football coaches at universities is what I'm kind of alluding to. Unfortunately, we have that in line. The, our lead learner has to make the most difficult decisions. Um, and then, and then get support from the board in doing so. So, um, with that, with those, kind of with that introduction in mind, I will defer to Superintendent Kloski to present, um, to us, uh, resolutions 693 and 694.
So as President Lurie said, you will need to, um, if you are so inclined to take action this evening, you will need to take action separately on each of these resolutions because they are a, a separate number each. As to the certificated, there is a slight change in the number on this due to, another resignation that we didn't know about, um, when we first presented this. So you will see a, an adjustment there in the elementary. I think it's important to remember that, um, the certificated resolution in particular does reflect, um, the resignations leaves as well as, um, limited contracts that, um, are reflected in the resolution. So it is, it's a smaller number than what we will be able to restore. And also to President Lurie's point, um, as we move out of this pandemic, yes, um, we do acknowledge that there are some federal dollars, but for Mercer Island School District, just another reminder that they are very limited for us. Um, Title One dollars, um, are not a huge component. And if you look at some of, Director Bergstrom's graphs over time, this, the slice for federal dollars is very small for us. And the Esser dollars have been apportioned in that same manner. They're also one-time funds and they are not funds that, um, really can be used to sustain something over time. We look to be using them as we build a recovery plan that is going to be inclusive of a different summer school this year, as we've, um, talked about last meeting with the board, as well as recovery in the fall. We do anticipate being fully open in the fall with still some, some mitigation strategies, most likely a three-foot physical distancing, which could then drive us to have to, um, still comply with class sizes that we're not specifically funded for. So we may be having to do some movement with staff allocation. Specifically funded for. So we may be having to do some movement with staff allocations, just like we did at the start of this year to be able to bring our K and one students in. Um. We are not reducing our drama program at the high school. You do not see any the certificated. Reductions in the drama program that is delivered by our drama teacher who is also. Our theater manager. So I I just want to make that very clear. That we are not reducing our theater program at the high school. We haven't had, and now I'll address a little bit um on the classified side of the house. We have not had our theater as well as many of our facilities that we have facilities used for. They have not been used by outside entities for over a year. And particularly indoor facilities, um even in a phase three is going to be a very. Logistical um piece that is not going to be able to happen in the near future. And when we start to open our theater and use it again, it will be for our students first. However, we do know that in the future that our our theater is an asset. Our performing arts center is an asset to the Mercer Island community and we um do anticipate. Long term that it will be um opened up again for those who have previously previously used it for um performances. Um. I think I'll just let you ask questions and we will answer them as best we can. I'm not sure if you want another review of. You know, where how we got here, we um have talked about the enrollment decline and even over time, as we've looked at enrollment. Since the October cutoff, it's it is about that October cutoff, but it's also about what's happened since then. And we're down um overall another fifty students and it's an I'm gonna say it, look at it tied to make sure I'm saying it right. Right? We have that October count, but we also have an annual weekly average type. Just an annual average. And so that then impacts the um. Revenue allocations that we will receive this year. For um students that are not in our building. So we are already feeling the impacts of what was um assumed revenue that has not. Come in. If we do have one graph of um that the board might like to see because it's a little bit later in March. Ty does have um February's information and is able to show you the projection. For where our trends are going for any fund balance, if you would like to see that we, he was just working on it late this afternoon because that's just kind of new information, but he could share that. Um, on the screen if if the board would like to see that.
I think that would be useful.
Is Ty able to share? Are you? I'm sorry, Ty didn't get you prepped for it.
Can everybody see the graph? Okay. Um. Let me get a little bit bigger. Okay, uh, in terms of. February's numbers, we have projected February at coming in. Just over three point two million dollars in ending fund balance. We ended at three point one seven. Um, so just a hair over a hundred thousand dollars less than what we had projected uh for February close. So we are tracking very closely to the projections of our fund balance. Um, I will say I am tracking our cash levels daily, a daily basis. I have never seen our cash levels this low in terms as in watching as we were spending and. And watching our revenues come in and the dollars go out. So we are tracking very closely to what we have projected for the year.
Can you remind me what our monthly um? Expenditures are for step for payroll?
Uh, monthly payroll cost. It depends uh on the month of. Because of overtime or specifically for people coming in and not coming out, but it usually averages about three point three million.
And the recommended.
Our recommend, sorry, alright. Destination to the board has always been that we have two months worth of payroll. That in the event that um. We ever get short paid by OSPI or the levy collections um are delayed. We would have sufficient to not only cover at least one month of payroll, but two months. Uh, and if we did, we're able to recover um after that first month, we would at least have enough to continue business operations. So paying. For the lights, paying for utilities, paying for insurance. So uh, our recommendation has always been that uh two months, which is equal to about eight percent. Right now, we're sitting probably about maybe a little under five percent. Um, we will be, March is gonna most likely close very similar to February, maybe a little bit below. We will get our April collections. I have not heard anything levy collections in April. I have not heard anything to indicate that. Collections will be delayed this year. Um, we did have some concerns in the previous year um at the start of the pandemic. There was some um language uh put out by the county and the state um deferring levy collections. We did have some concerns, but I have not heard that. For the current April collections. Um, so we should see those coming in as normal.
So. The so so we've been hearing the argument of um. Not that we want to be doing any of this, but the. Arguments of, you know, there's a little bit here and there's a little bit here and and how would it make a difference? How are these cuts? How are these recommended cuts gonna make a difference for us?
So I I will jump into that. Um. The original conversation with the board was back in January, at your January study session, and we talked about um two hundred and twenty students. Being about equivalent to two point six million. And then as um our decline has continued with another fifty students. That um takes it to about two hundred and seventy, which then hits that um. Three million due to that continual decline. The. This transportation is another um piece to this. We did do a reduction because of the changes. In transportation allocations. However, we still um. We have increased transportation because of our hybrid model, but our revenues in transportation um have not come in as to what was projected there as well. So. That um, we've always had. That come into play um when we talk about transportation and and the relationship to basic at dollars there as well. Any did I? Do you need more specific numbers?
I mean, honestly, in looking at um. In looking at the proposed reductions, um. It seems like we're about four million dollars in the hole or at least lower than where we'd like to be. And and I think as a board, we did determine that, you know, this is the rainy day. So if we need to dip below um fun, you know, below. Our desired fund balance, we will do so. Um. Is is this reduction of eleven FTEs, at least with regards to the certificated, is that is that really making a difference? I mean, is it gonna solve our problem? Sorry, I don't uh. I mean.
I I think I understand the question. Um, yes, the calculation is that by reducing staff to match the reduced enrollment. It it will balance out the budget, but what you also need to realize is again, this is giving the authority and over the next few months, the things we're watching closely are. Enrollment and staffing. And as we see, um, we all sat in a presentation earlier this week with Les Kendrick on what's happening in our region with enrollment. And what his expectations were and and surprise, surprise, they think that kindergarten is going to be more than it was this year. We have projected that into our assumptions for twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, will it come in more than that? And as we do every year, sometimes we have to make adjustments. Sometimes it's moving a a staff. From position from one school to another school. But sometimes it is, we have too many kindergartners, we need to add another section. And so. Those pieces will come into play as we move through the spring and and into the summer.
Right. I think you you answered my question in terms of that this matches our reduction in students. So that's, okay.
I think it's, I think, looking at it the same way, but from a different vantage point. You know, it's always our goal to use what's all what what can we do differently short of a riff? Because of reduction enforced as. Everyone has mentioned is the last thing you ever want to have to go through. So you first look at all those contracts that are limited or that are backfilling other positions or those leaves. And if that's not enough, then you have to look at that riff piece. And so I think it's the combination of both of those. Um, and I know it continues to kind of come up. In conversations that I've been in. In particular around um the fund balance and, you know, what's a fund balance for if you're not gonna use it during the pandemic? And I think one of the reminders for us all, and and so it's not just for those um who are asking the question, but we have to remind ourselves is that. In a normal year, um going into right now, we're projecting for next year. And the two most important projections are staffing and enrollment. And when we projected off of last year, we didn't anticipate the enrollment drop. And so it's just a re- a reiteration mainly for us all that. We did use the rainy day fund quite a bit this year because we didn't reduce staff. Over the summer, when all of a sudden we realized that we were gonna be, you know. X number of kids short. And then when we got to October, we didn't reduce staff when we realized that that number was two twenty. And so it's just remembering that we did use a lot of the rainy day fund this year because we didn't want to reduce staff. Right in the middle of something, knowing that they need so much. If we can't do that two years in a row, and so that's why we are where we are today is we're looking at the fact that. We know we're excited about the small amounts of money we're gonna get, but we know we've got a lot of unlearning that we've got to support. We have a lot of um uh road coming out of recovery and those are one-time dollars. And so to use them all on staffing would then set us up for just postponing the inevitable for later on. So we have to be thoughtful about that. And I think that's where. The superintendent has, you know, come to the board and and had to have those tough discussions with us and and us tough discussions with staff to say. We're probably going to need to take all of our limited contracts. Also, think about possibly eliminating some other positions through a riff. And that's how we're gonna be able to make this whole again. But as you also said, it's just the authority to do so. The hope is we start to see better forecasts and we don't have to go as deep, but we have to plan for the worst so that we're not. In a really bad situation come the summer.
So from my reading of this and from what you just said, Fred, um, the community and and the teaching staff should know more by either May fifteenth or June fifteenth. Is that correct? In terms of like money coming from the state and whether anything's gonna change.
I don't know about dates on that. Ty, you might have a better idea. I doubt that it's gonna be that. I think, Erin, it's more in your wheelhouse on this because it's more about the contractual piece that we need to make sure we follow um here in the short term.
Right, and uh. Dr. Randall, you're right. It really, the May fifteenth, June fifteenth deadlines are contractually and um led statutory. Early required in terms of providing people notice of an adverse action. So we have to notify staff if we think we are going to have to take adverse action against them by those dates. Um, for certificated staff. And then if we do get money after or if we adjust, we can retract that. There is a, there's a damage that's done whenever we have these conversations and we could risk losing talented staff. That is a reality, but that's sort of the box that we're in because we don't have the luxury to wait until last minute. And that is as much for. Us i- i- as for them, because we also want to give them advanced notice so they can secure other employment. If we really think we're going down that road. But as Fred mentioned, we try to look um at other ways first, um which we have done and we account. For, um, as I said, resignations, leaves or assignment that we don't backfill. So the reduction to our system is greater than what you see. And the cost savings to the system is greater than what you see on the resolutions because what the resolution doesn't show are all those uh retirements and. Leaves that we are not filling for next year, that we don't anticipate to fill. Um, which is one of the reasons why you saw the shift in the elementary um certificated. Uh, it it changed from three to one because we got resignations um and they're in changes. So. We're not going to backfill them. So now we only need authority at most for one um for the elementary general classroom teacher.
That helped Director Tucker. I have another question unless someone else wants to jump in. Not seeing anyone turn off mute, I will ask my question, but please jump in when you when you all have questions. Can you explain? Um, you know, we heard, I think, I think we heard um. Some some strong arguments for um, well, and we all know and value the um, the work that our librarians librarians bring to our elementary schools. Can you give a little more detail as to why you're recommending the elimination of one FTE and just just talk about that a little bit more of your thinking?
So several years ago, we had three elementary schools and then Northwood was built and opened and um. The schools went from being large, some of them um up to seven hundred students to the size they are now, which is much smaller. Island Park is our smallest school and you can see on the enrollment report, it's sitting in, you know, half of of the size that our schools were before Northwood was open. So the responsibilities for the librarian certainly do go beyond um serving the classroom sections. But when you have fewer sections, um, the amount of time that those sections take does take less time. We certainly know that um our librarians do take on um. Other responsibilities. I too have have been a part of um some of the mindfulness pieces that Molly Harnish has instituted at um Northwood. But we also have to realize that what um contractually we have to um provide and what we can expand on is um. Not specifically outlined. And so by reducing those um. Those FTEs to a smaller size, it still allows all the services for students and classes to be implemented as they are outlined. Something that um we also need to keep in mind is that as we build um what's being called our recovery plan or our acceleration plan, people have used different terms for it. Is that we are going to have to strengthen and shore up our um MTSS, you saw it referenced in the earlier report tonight. Which really, we've already got in place and we've got two components to it. One that's about um student learning and achievement, the response to intervention, the RTI, and one that's about social emotional with the PBIS. And with. What has occurred for our students, we know that we're going to be looking for um resources to to shore that up and our our principals are going to be. Building plans around how do they shore that up? And is there um, is there some staffing that could then be one-time limited staffing? That um those recovery. At dollars might be used for to support um. Some of those positions, but at this time, we are not closing our libraries. Um, we have met extensively with our elementary principals and they. Um, we have met extensively with our elementary principals and they can build a master schedule around the timeframe of a point seven five librarian. And um, we, we know that we have very talented staff that we hope to be able to um, utilize as well when we are building our recovery plan. So again, it's that large school to the small school setting.
Um, if I can jump in here a little bit from the the ledger up side of it. There's a lot of talk around ESER funds and and other state dollars or federal dollars coming in and how they can be utilized. Um, so our group of Eastside um, cohort that meets every Friday, uh, last week, had the opportunity to meet with the uh, staff member from Senator Murray's office and to get some clarification around ESER funds and the formulas being used. Um, up to this point, a lot of people have thrown around um, free and reduced price lunches, FERPLE, uh, as a, a point being used to um, to figure out the amount for ESER. Uh, but in fact, that's not what's used in the formula. It's Title One funds and it's a complicated little formula. It is actually, um, according to the staffer, more restrictive than free and reduced uh, priced lunch plans. Um, it's harder to be qualified under these um, census guided statistics than it is free and reduced lunch. So you have to be experiencing a higher level of poverty. The other thing that um, the staff member mentioned was that ESER, um, while the Senate wanted to explore other options of assessing of how to apply this money and how to portion it. Um, the House did not want to do that. They wanted to use this specific formula. So they were really cornered into that. And so ESER essentially is really intended to address the needs of high poverty. It was never intended to create a foundational base, which addressed the needs of all students across the United States in regard to the impacts of COVID. Um, so what has happened is this structure, the scaffolding has been created by the federal government through ESER funds. Um, that was supposed to sit on a foundation that addressed the needs of general education students across the board, because every student, every facility, every district experienced, is experiencing these impacts. Unfortunately, to date, no one has provided that foundation. There's just the scaffolding piece hanging out on the side. Now districts do have the flexibility, once they're apportioned that money through ESER and those formulas, a lot of flexibility in how to use that within the district. But what it means for a district like Mercer Island is that we don't receive anywhere near the amount that other districts would be receiving. And so it doesn't come anywhere near dealing with the impact of what we would experience on Mercer Island. Not only will it not likely cover all of the expenses, everything that was poured into uh, this last year um, of dealing with COVID, um, money moving forward, even with stash reductions, are not going to allow for these extra components that a lot of people are talking about. So there's a misunderstanding in our state legislature and the governor's office, OSPI, all of these folks are here talking about how wonderful it is to have these ESER funds. Well, if you're a school district that receives apportionment under Title One in this large amount, it is a good thing for you, but it's not for us and many of our neighbors within this region. Um, and those federal numbers and formulas that are used to assess the sort of uh, level of poverty or experiencing um, income levels and disparities in that, um, doesn't come anywhere near addressing the cost of living in our region. It's, i- i- it's, it's a federal number that is nowhere near recognizing the reality of what it is to be in King County um, in this Puget Sound area. So I think it's really important to point that out to folks that um, Mercer Island is not seeing a lot of support through ESER one, two, or three. Um, it's really quite small. Um, the second component is, um, so there was the bill that we were all kind of watching very closely, which was the Engross Substitute House Bill uh, fourteen seventy six, which was supposed to deal with enrollment stabilization. Um, the language was stripped out for enrollment stabilization and protecting those funds. And what was left in was a levy stabilization. So um, that would provide a little bit of money because it meant we could count the previous year's enrollment in collecting local levy. Uh, which i- it's something. Um, unfortunately, that was scheduled in Senate Ways and Means today. Um, and no action was taken on it. So at this point, um, I have to suspect that House Bill and gross House Bill uh, fourteen seventy six has died in committee. So it means that we won't be receiving levy equalization. So the final hail Mary pass for all of us is that there's a budget proviso placed in at the end of session. So what we're looking at here as part of these resolutions is at least giving notification, setting a plan in motion as to what the future could look like. Um, it's not a, a drop that then right now that it's going to happen right now. Um, but it's reliant on that budget proviso. And we have to continue to share the information with everyone we can. ESER is not covering these impacts. And so long as the OSPI budget and the governor's budget, as long as the legislature does not apportion money and funds to deal with this issue and these impacts, then we are facing a huge loss for next year. That foundation that ESER scaffolding was supposed to be placed on is never going to show up. And so we have to deal with those impacts as well as figuring out how we're going to sustain the long term educational program. Um, that was much longer than it needed to be. But I, like, this is the one thing that I've been running in my hamster wheel on for the last ten days. Um, and the last week especially. And it, I cannot get it across enough to people that for Mercer Island School District, ESER was not the hail Mary. Um, it, it just isn't. It's not going to provide the solution.
And I think just that overview is absolutely spot on with what that big picture is. And just to fill in that one gap on why the levy and that not making it through committee is so significant is we're one of the few districts going back, and I know we keep talking about, but we're one of the few districts who collect based on student enrollment for levy and not on property value. And so when our enrollment goes down, we not only lose out on the basic ed dollars that are attached to enrollment, we lose out on levy dollars because we're not tied to our property values. And so it's a double hit for our school district.
And just to throw one more monkey wrench in there, the um, funding formula for transportation is also um, a huge um, hiccup, so to speak, um, for everyone, but for Mercer Island School District in particular. It was even pointed out in a meeting that Director Janine Eupen and I were in with um, Senator Wellman, that Mercer Island School District has never been funded at the rate for our transportation as other districts have because of the way the funding for transportation flows with um, ridership. And it, we're not seeing anything coming through to make any um, major adjustments to that either. I don't have any um, questions, uh, but I would like to like address the board some of my thoughts. And so how do we proceed? Uh, but before I do, I want to acknowledge and thank those who have emailed the board with their thoughts and concerns. Uh, I'm sure like all of you, you know, I and the board have spent tons of time and a lot of time this week. Like Brian saying that you've been thinking about this for like last ten days in your wheelhouse, right? We've just been real obsessed with uh, these budget cuts. We've been spending a lot of time thinking about the short term and long term impact of these proposed cuts. And I keep going back to questioning if our proposed cuts align with our values of diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I know that we do uh, DI work across the district, but I feel like the Spanish language program was really that explicit and uh, visual um, example of our commitment to equity, diversity, inclusion. Right? And then um, I, my kids aren't involved in drama and things like that, but the emails that came through to the board really valid- validated the staff and programming in the Performance Arts Center and the libraries, how they really help us to live our, our values of inclusion. And it's really an essential social emotional learning and support for students who may not feel connected to the traditional school setting. So for me, it does seem like this proposed cuts go against a lot of our DI values and vision. And I also feel like um, we are once in a lifetime situation where I believe our budget cuts are not just a matter of keeping, you know, cutting things to balance our budget, but rather this is an opportunity to reassess our entire system and make strategic uh, cuts and changes throughout our system that would put us in a position to grow and recover from, you know, post-COVID. And it's also an opportunity for us to show that at all level, we are suffering the impact uh, of this um, budget cut together. Um, and there is no doubt that we have to make budget cuts and most likely will, will agree on strategies. Um, but I think when I try to think what is essential, because we do, we talk about essential, nice and extra. And when I think of what's essential, I really believe what is essential uh, for us moving forward is to have the support and confidence of our students, parents, and community. Uh, and to do this, I believe that it's important to prioritize direct services and instruction to our students, where our students can have more direct um, contacts from teacher and staff, where they can have that one person, where we provide more, you know, that one person that they can feel connected to. Um, I think we can do a better, um, you know, I believe we can do a better job aligning our proposed cuts with our values and future goals. And even though the administration has done a good job in presenting the proposed cuts in the last meeting, I think we as a board have to do more to notify and prepare our parents and community of how these budget cuts um, aligns with our values and how it will impact the future. Um, I know it's May fifteenth is coming really soon, but it's not just like any other year budget cuts, you know? In the past, what have we done to really take the community and the parents through this process? Um, just presenting it at this public meeting and it's, it's not enough for me. Um, because I don't think if we do our due diligence um, to notify and have prepared the parents, I'm not confident that we will have their support when we need it later. So that's why kind of like asking the board to think about, you know, in the past, when we make these huge, you know, changes, you know, we did so much to get, uh, to get like buy-in for like, let's say the Spanish program. Are we doing enough due diligence and the same to, you know, closure, termination and closure really needs to be um, to be given. And I, and I asked that we um, I don't know, do um, a letter to the parents, you know, whatever, to show um, that this is what's happening. But at this moment, it does seem a little bit rushed. And I do understand that we ultimately need to give the superintendent have our decision. But um, you know, we have until May fifteenth and I would really like for us as a board to better prepare our community. I think Erin would like to address the May fifteenth statement.
Yeah, I want to highlight that that is the date by which they must have been notified of an adverse action. I don't get to have a decision on that because there's a process and it's quite complicated to figure out who it is that I need to notify. For example, we have librarians, as I think um, the librarian spoke earlier today, shared that she, because of her endorsement, could become a elementary general ed teacher. So who does she just face? So while that person, and it is quite possibly a person on a limited contract, because we built in assuming that our librarians and our Spanish teachers who will bump people up at the high school, so like an elementary Spanish teacher will move to the high school. So it, it is a bumping process based on seniority and it is an entire process with notifications. So it would not be possible for me to comply with the contractual and legal obligations if I were told on the fifteenth, this is what we are doing. So I just want to, I mean, the board can go about its process in a timeline, but just know that May fifteenth is not a reasonable deadline. Um, something more like April um, twenty second would be the latest that I think I could reasonably affect that change. And again, that there's a lot um, of work that would have to be done. And as I said, when you see a elimination of a program such as Spanish, that doesn't necessarily mean the individuals in that program are being ejected or erased from our system. Um, because we have to build a, a plan that assumes since we have Spanish teachers with seniority, that they are being absorbed elsewhere. So as I said, an elementary Spanish teacher with a K twelve endorsement in Spanish and more language will bump a high school Spanish teacher who could then bump a middle school Spanish teacher. And so, but then we have a middle school Spanish teacher who maybe has an elementary endorsement, who's then in a middle school. So that's why we may have um, that's why there's a lot of moving parts. Um, so it doesn't necessarily assume that the um, that there are not options for those teachers to remain in a full FTE within our system um, because of what their endorsements are. So I just want to be transparent and just be very clear that May fifteenth cannot be the board's deadline because of the things that have to happen after.
No, I appreciate the additional clarification and um, you know, people do fight for their educator. I mean, as a board, we uh, value all of our educators and I would, I'm, from my perspective, I'm thinking more programming of how, what values it brings to Mercer Island and what we think, uh, what the state might think is non-essential. But it has, it is that essential to Mercer Island. And you know, when we take these things away, what are we telling parents? And then what vow, you know, uh, because our parents have choices. And so, um, yeah, um.
So, um, Tam, I hear you. And you know, I would love to put this off and not have to make a decision. The fact of the matter is, we've, we've known that this was coming. We've been talking about it straightforwardly for months and months. And um, and we've been talking about it frankly, for over a year, knowing that it was coming and hoping that natural attrition would manage it. Um, and I think frankly, we're pretty darn close because of the conservative budget actions that um, Ty and and Donna have, have taken. I don't think, I don't think postponing this decision with whatever decision it might be is beneficial to anyone. This sucks. There's nothing good about RIFs. No one ever wants to do it. Um, and it's never a good thing. You know, we're not in private industry where we can quote unquote, trim the fat and do away with, you know, people or programs that we don't value as highly as other people. We're a public education system. Um, we are unions and there are very clear cut ways that layoffs and and RIFs happen um, based on seniority, because that's the system that we have. And you know, we can, we can, we can debate it. I, I mean, I'm part of one too. Uh, I'm not interested in debating it because it is, it's what we have to deal with right now. Um, and I, I just, I think we have to do, I, I think we have to make these decisions. Or the way that I'm coming at this in terms of making my decision is um, I want to make, I want to, I want the cuts to be, I'm not making any cuts. I'm approving them possibly. Um, I want the cuts to be as far away from students um, direct needs as possible. And one could say, but students experience the Spanish program every day, students experience librarians every day. I think it's clear, um, I think it's been clear from the presentations today as well as the emails we've gotten, the value that our librarians add to our elementary students. And I don't think that's going to go away. And I have confidence that there are going to be places and purposes um, for, for what our librarians, librarians bring to our students and our buildings. The fact of the matter is with the way that our um, staff contracts are, um, we can't with the contracts that we have, and correct me if I'm wrong, Erin and Donna, we can't just say, oh, by the way, you can do this because, you know, because to make up your, your point two five. It doesn't mean that they're building leaders, can't give them different tasks, but it can't be under, at least the way our contract is right now, our librarian contracts, because they have specific responsibilities under those duties. So there, there, we know that there's going to be other needs that our students have. And, and these are phenomenal educators and they very well might be tapped to do some of that. Um, but this is regarding positions, not people. And the fact of the matter is that we took four, um, we have four full-time um, equivalent employee, a library and positions with fewer students than we had in three buildings when we had three full-time um, librarians. And it's irresponsible. And it's irresponsible to, to set a budget that way. And, and I know that there were decisions made at the time that we had Northwood, I wasn't on the board. But at the time where, you know, we added what? A million and a half dollars in administrative costs by opening a fourth elementary school. And that's a forever, one and a half million a year in administrative costs. And those are necessary costs because this community chose to have a fourth elementary school and have smaller schools. Well, in doing so, you know, we were, we were staffed with the three elementary schools at a much higher rate. Because we only had three schools and we had the same number of students, maybe plus or minus, whatever, as we do now. The, I think it's important to remember, I'm going to get in trouble for this, I'm going to say it anyways. There was tremendous pushback by our families and most importantly, by our teachers with regards to the Spanish program. And it wasn't that many years ago, because I was part of it. And we made a choice and I think it was an important choice. And I think our students have benefited in a lot of ways from it, but it was a choice. And anytime you have changed, there's going to be pushback, just like we're already getting pushed back on the, on the. E two program. And you know, that came out two hours ago. It was, the teachers voted against doing a Spanish elementary program. And now, we don't want to cut anyone, but if we, and I said this at the last meeting and I will own it and I will say it again. If I had to choose between an elementary world language program and providing emotional supports to our students. I choose emotional supports to our students right now. And I think that is equity and diversity, because all of our students are being impacted differently. And this isn't to say that I don't value those teachers and hopefully we can find places for you. They're beloved members of our community. But we have to put our students' needs first. And if I have to make the decision of supporting a student, learning. Another language or learning about another culture versus being emotionally whole. I'm choosing emotionally whole every day of the week. And it doesn't mean maybe some of those teachers can, can take on those positions. But we're looking at positions, not people. And I think that's really, when we're looking at our students, we have to look at positions, not people. I think there's been a lot of, I don't want to go too much into the classified. But I think that, I think there's been a lot of misinformation out there that, 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 you know, the, the. Administration is, is not necessarily wanting to get into big battles about. As Donna said, the drama program isn't going away and the performing arts center isn't going away. Those services will continue to be provided and those students' needs will be met. The question is, is, is that position necessary? When the majority of the salary of that position comes from rentals. Of a facility that we haven't been able to rent for a year and that we have no end in sight. Maybe in six months, we can start renting out, who knows? But certainly not right now. And it's, it would be irresponsible of us to keep a position open. That is paying for a salary of someone that we're not recouping the money for, especially one that as much as I know it impacts students. It's not a teaching position. If it was a CTE position. We wouldn't be having this conversation because that educator would be teaching our students. And yeah, all, all the staff in our buildings are from our janitorial to our bus drivers, to our. Administrative staff, our clerical staff in the offices who are often the first people to see our students. They have a huge impact on our students. But our job is to teach our students. And if we have to make cuts based on. Lessening that risk while supporting our students as much as we can. So I hear you. I think, I think none of us have slept, just like our, our teachers haven't. But it's our job. It's what we were elected to do and we have to make the decision because we have to move forward and heal from it. And then people also who are going to be impacted by this deserve the opportunity to make the right decision for themselves. I would strongly, strongly encourage it. I'm sure the building administrators have been doing this. If teachers or staff, if you're not coming back next year, please give your notice. Because it's impacting people's lives and we've gotten just a couple from last couple of weeks. Of more people that have known that they were leaving but haven't given their notice. We don't want to do this to anyone. But we don't have, we have a responsibility to make sure that our students are taken care of. And the way that this board can do that is making sure that our budget is sound. I am, I was asking the questions about the fund balance because those numbers terrify me. Because I know that our safety net is no longer in place to make sure that we can cover the payrolls when we need to. I'm, I'm, I'm willing to take the hit for that, but, but those numbers scare me right now. I think this is something that I think it's our obligation to take action. I have full faith in our superintendent. I see the vision that she has for our district moving forward. And making sure that the decisions are frankly, as far away from students as possible. And I think that that's what we need to look at. And I think punting it, I, I just think it's going to ultimately cause more harm.
I wanted to just chime in. You, you asked a, a good question, Tam. And I, I, I do, I really hear your point about the, the. Inclusion and diversity aspects of, of the cuts that, that are being talked about. But you asked like, what does this say to parents, you know, about our district? And I think, and about the board. And I think that what it says is that, that we're being financially responsible. You know, like we, like, I know everyone sees that we're on like this upward trend and you know, things are getting better. People are getting vaccinated. That's great, but we don't know what's going to happen next year. You know, we could have more like unexpected dramatic needs that, that we need that, the rest of the fund balance for. You're, when, with a, a big public institution, you're always going to be making decisions under some conditions. Some level of uncertainty in the conditions that you have. And it's a little bit of a trapeze act where you sort of have to like jump. Based on where you think the other variables are going to be coming in, you know? What do you think the population is going to be on the island? What do you think the enrollment is going to be? You know, like we're, that's why we do all these projections. We don't do them. That's why Ty does all these projections, you know? And the, and the various consultants that we use. We, we have made, the district has made, and I had nothing to do with these decisions, but the district has made a lot of really good decisions in the past. I'm sure some not so great as well, but, but we have reaped the benefits of some of those. Past decisions this year and continue to do so. For example, the fact that we have that fourth elementary school, the fact that we have more space per student than a lot of other districts do. So that now that, you know, the guidance is, is shifting to three feet per student. We're in a lot better position to get more of our kids back more full-time for the fall, say. Than a lot of districts in this, in this region, which even at three feet per student will have a very, very hard time doing so. So, you know, we, we kind of like are building on what, you know, the decisions that have been made in the past. I, I think that. I, I just hope that, I think this is a really important discussion to have. And I hope that people will listen to it, like people will go back and, and listen to the recorded version of it. Or, I mean, I would rather that people listen to the discussion rather than, than just like read the minutes or the, you know, the update or the board buzz or whatever. Because I, I really worry that in the current climate with everyone's anxiety level still so high. And so much uncertainty kind of flying around that people are very fast to say, you want to cut these positions. Do you hate theater? Like, do you hate the Spanish language? Like, why would you do this, right? And that is really not what is going on. Like, we're trying to do the best that we can for the district as a whole, but the, the students in particular. And to do it in a way that's fair and open and allows people chances to, to make, you know, rearrangements. So I, I mean, I don't, at that point in this discussion. But, but I, I feel like it's the only responsible thing for, for the board as a whole to do at this point.
I'm not, I'm not punting it. I do think I'm just asking for more community engagement with our parents and our community. Because I mean, we've been really great through Zoom, getting more community engagement than before. But I would guarantee you that probably sixty, seventy percent, when this happened, it could be what? We never heard of it. So I, I do think that I'm asking for that. I'm not punting it. I do think, I, I don't disagree that we have to make cuts. And that of course, we have to be fiscally responsible. But I do think we do may differ in where we prioritize the cuts, right? And so in a whole system, there are, there are different, many different decisions that we can make with cuts. And so one of my point was that when we make these cuts, that we do see it from a DI lens. And that we make cuts across the board so that, you know, that there isn't a certain sector of our community that feel targeted. And when we cut just certain programs, like the Spanish program or the, the theater or the librarian. It will, whether it's right or wrong, if we don't do it right, even if we get to that point, even if we don't do it right. Like you said, Maggie Ty, it's, people aren't going to be in shock. And that's where my concern is. It's like that moving forward, what are their relationship with us as we're, you know, asking for support later on? And you know, will this lead to more people leaving the district? So I'm thinking kind of like, what is my essential? And my essential is where do I get confidence and support from parents? And what do we need to get there? And so it's not about punting and not making decision. We will vote. But I do think that we need to have more community engagement.
I just want to say, I, 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 if, if that came off as derogatory, I apologize. I meant put off. I don't mean, that, that's all I meant. So I apologize if that came off as derogatory. I think with the number of, I, I just, I just agree to disagree with you in terms of the community engagement. I think that we, I think that we have had, we've had public meeting after public meeting. We've had a tremendous number of emails and community and public input. But on both sides, supporting different programs and the reasons why and different alternatives. I, I, I think we've heard what we're going to hear and, and if we continue it out. It's just going to cut, like just cause more turmoil. And, and again, I apologize. I didn't mean that to be in a derogatory way at all. I just mean like at some point, and I think now is the time to rip off the mandate and make the decision. Because I think it's better for the community.
I, I will say we've, we've been going through this for the past ten plus months. And the board has tried to delay taking an action here by spending down our fund balance. Reducing transportation. There are a number of things we've done along the way to try and delay this decision. And we had been in the process of trying to delay the inevitable as we've watched the declining enrollment even before the pandemic. That accelerated it. If you're, if you're asking for votes from community members who supported some of these programs. You know, I, I, I've, I was a board member when we voted for the Spanish world language program. So I could have a natural affinity to that. I could, I could call out the math being removed as. You know, very, very painful too. And I think we'll, we are, we will all, we will all have our picks and shoot. And, and a keeps and, and, and gives around all, all of these. And I think that's just going to be a terrible thing to make the community reconcile. At this point, we've had our administration manage the operations. And our superintendent has selected through the best of her knowledge and ability. How we right-size our budget. And I, I, I'm reticent to, even as the board dive into the nuances of that. Just five people trying to pick and choose from the four hundred plus types of positions we've got. Much, you know, five of us doing that compared to now a community of parents doing that as well. I don't know. I think, I think this is, this is a decision where there's a board that has to know and understand where we're at. Has to know and understand where the administration is coming from. And make a decision based on knowledge, expertise and, and trust. And I don't think that comes from a community vote on something like this. You know, we didn't, we didn't put a community vote out when we did the Spanish language program. Also, at the same time as we did the Spanish language program, we did make enhancements to the librarians as well. We took feedback, but in the end, we decided we would do it as a, as a school board and an administration. And, you know, and I take some, I take some responsibility for that too, because I, I did vote for that. And I feel like I'll be on the side unfortunately of. Voting that it could be cut right now if. If the funding doesn't, situation doesn't change, which, you know, I think actually there's, based on Brian's prognosis. Is a high probability the funding situation won't change. And that's a sad place to be. And that's, that's kind of why I think we have to make a decision today. And allow some certainty as the rest of the variables play out. As Maggie Ty spoke about, now we've got to get this trapeze moving. Waiting for the other one, hopefully we'll meet at a good place. So, yeah, I'm, I'm. As painful as it is, I, I, I do support the superintendent's decision. Around this. And I think as a school district, we, we need to make these decisions today, tonight.
So just to clarify, David, like I wasn't asking for the community to vote. I mean, that's why they elected us to kind of represent some of their perspective. But, and I, I guess I just mean, you know, have very different, a different view about community engagement in. Because really, even though we've been talking about budget cuts, everybody kind of see the writing on the wall. It was really like the last meeting that we presented what was being cut, right? And so I guess my, my, well, my framework of community engagement is that we let the community know that these are the proposed cut, you know? And then if they come back with advocacy or, you know, they're not happy with it, that's part of the process, right? And then it may or it may not change anybody's mind, but at least we have given that time, that space. You know, to let people know. And so even if they don't like our decisions, they can say that we did, you know, that they knew about it. And so that's kind of my perspective on community engagement. You know, yeah, but I wasn't expecting for the community to have a vote. But I do want to, I do think they deserve to know what is being impacted. Because they're part of this process. And it's, it is a big, is a big like chunk of cuts. It's not like in other years, we had to, you know, cuts here and there. This is a significant, and especially during this time, you know, as we're moving forward. I just feel like we really need to keep each other in the loop.
Anything else? I'm looking for a motion with regards to, or do you want to hand over a resolution? Sorry, I'm going back to the numbers. Six ninety-three first fully and then move to six ninety-four? Yeah, so I'm looking for a motion with regards to resolution six ninety-three.
I moved that school board approved resolution six nine three.
Seconded.
Any further discussion?
All in favor of resolution number six ninety-three, please indicate by saying aye.
Is it referenced in the resolution?
I, I believe it is.
Oh, there it is. I found it. It is, it's referenced in there. Any further discussion? All in favor of resolution number six ninety-three, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? You're, okay, let me go through that again. All in favor indicate, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions?
Any abstentions? By a vote of four to one, resolution number six ninety-three is approved. Moving on to resolution number six ninety-four. Six Superintendent Kloski.
We wanna give um some clarification on the change that occurred in um this resolution from your first reading to your second reading. And it does have to do with um some contractual agreement. And um it has to do with the date that is in the exhibit, I believe. Erin, can you um update on the change that occurred with the date? And the contract, contractual agreement?
Yes, so um the classified rif- resolution was updated to reflect a change to become effective um at the end of June. Uh which is predate is before, obviously, next year, previously, it just said for the next academic year. That change was made because of um there, July and August, there was not perceived to be a need for some of the, for most of those positions during that time. Though they were on the um the letters of assignment, limited letters assignment, when we're talking about our represented members. There was a reference earlier on uh by a commenting that there, that to make this change is a violation of the contract. Um MIEA and the district continue to discuss, but the district believes that it's uh permitted under the contract to you do a mid-year adverse impact, which is what this would be for those people who have days that it go beyond um June thirtieth. That is not all people on or all, all people impacted. So not all positions are go through Ju- July and August, but it is some of them. Um the one area that is uh somewhat problematic, you had already and the the union had already had ample time to review the proposal with respect to uh classified reductions um. And sorry, I just lost what I was looking at. With respect to classified reductions for next year, however, under the contract, they have the ability and it provides that um the official employee of the organization, which MIA shall have five business days to review and respond to the superintendent its recommendation to the board of directors with respect to adverse impact. They have not had that opportunity with respect to the adverse impact that would be um which is just the July and August ad- first impact. So that change for those two months, they have not had that opportunity for the represented people only. Um which, as you can see, there's several non-represented positions. So the board can still take action on this, um but they do have five days to res- uh to respond and the board could revisit this um their decision with respect to that. But the provisions um that five days relates only to the requirement is only to the represented positions. Does that, do you have any questions about that?
So are you recommending that we, so do we proceed with it or do we need to hold those back?
My recommendation would be to proceed and then revisit to the extent that you get input from the MIA with respect to their positions and that two month um period of time, so Ju- July and August. Because everything else they have had ample time or more than five days to review and respond.
The change was not posted um significant time amount prior to this board meeting. We weren't able to get the revised resolution um posted until Tuesday. So it is a timeline piece. But you could still approve and then um as Erin said, bring it back and readdress um at a later date if there, if the board felt there was a need to do that.
And what it specifically says, the contract provision, do I have share rights?
Yes.
Can you see it says Article seven, layoff adverse effect and recall?
Yes.
The section we're referencing, the recommendations of superintendent of the board of directors shall be made available in writing to the official employee of the organization at the same time they are transmitted to the board of the directors. That occurred. The official employees of organizations should have five business days to review and respond to the superintendent's recommendations to the board. It doesn't prohibit you from taking action. Um it gives the employees of the organization who is the union president five days to respond. Um they have already responded to the prior recommendations and continue to respond. And I I do think that we will continue to hear feedback um from the MIA with respect to these this decision and how it's implemented. Um but they have, they got more than five days before the last board meeting, the recommendation of the classified reductions for next calendar year. The only change is that really relates to the two months. And it would be an adverse action that would impact those people whose letters of assignment or limited letters of assignment have days of work that occur in July or August. But this contract provision does not impact the non-represented people who appear on the classified list.
And just to clarify, this is because there doesn't seem to be, it's not anticipated that there's gonna be things for them to do?
I think that there was not anticipated that that we would need them at their full capacity. And there was cost savings that could be recouped there that could be driven to other, to supporting summer programs in other places. That would be more directly beneficial for students in the summertime.
Is um, can you tell me specifically? It looks like this is three positions, right? Well, one, one full position and two one full position and then two very small parts of two positions, is that right?
I'm not sure what you're looking.
I'm looking at exhibit A, the classified reduction. Um number one is uh secretary head secretary eliminate forty hours a week at MIA. MIA, so I assume that's one full, full position.
So that would equate to one full position. The plan actually is not for that to be the case. It is um small portions of multiple positions that equate to forty hours per week at M. So it is not the elimination of one full position. So it is elimination forty hours per week at the high school. Um and then it is then half of um administrative assistant category twenty-four and category twenty-three.
Not half, it, I, at first I was reading it as half, but it's four hours per week. Right?
That is a, that should be four hours um per day per week. That would be a typo.
Oh, okay, that's pretty substantial.
That is pretty substantial.
What, can you tell me um approximate cost saving there?
I can, if you give me a second.
Ty, do you have that on your sheet? On the cost savings for the clerical positions, forty hours per week at the high school. And then the um four.
So that's half savings for, I think it's there, oh, this is for the cost savings at the high school. I believe it's thirty-two thousand, thirty-five dollars.
That's for the two month. I'm moving it up two months, that saves thirty-two thousand. If we're looking at the, were you asking for the total classified or just for that two-month window?
The total, the to- the two-month window.
Yeah, for the two-month window, the, is that correct, Ty?
Yeah.
Thirty-two thousand, thirty-five dollars.
Is for that one position? Or all three of those?
The combined.
Combined of all three?
Yeah, but my recommendation, and I apologize, I had not seen that typographical error. Um I have verbally communicated and it's been everyone's understanding in my meetings with MIA that it be reduced by four hours per day per week. So she will be reduced in half. Um but I would recommend with respect to the administrative assistant category twenty-three and category twenty-four positions that um there was an error. And as you said, it was a substantial scripters error. Um and I, I believe that it would be more sense to not move forward with respect to those two positions. So I would recommend instead moving forward at with a modification to eliminate numbers two and three.
Removing those from exhibit A for today.
Unless my, the superintendent thinks otherwise, as it has been well communicated in dialogue, but the um those two points do have an error. It's not four hours per week, it's four hours per day, five days a week. And I apologize that this was not caught by anyone, um but the responsibility rests with me. So I apologize.
I have thoughts, but I'd rather not go first. Anyone else?
Um I'm, I'm wondering if I I wonder if we just delay this particular one to allow that to be communicated, it affords the five days for the EA to respond, like I I I'm looking at exhibit A and that was given to us previously. And there it does say four hours a day. So that the intent was there of what it was, but you know.
I guess I'm, I'm looking at it more in terms of, I mean, I appreciate, we, we, I I'm not worried about the error in the sense of it unfortunately happens. I think the intent has been clear as well. Um I wa- I wonder if this is going a step too far. These are some of our lowest paid employees um who have relied on this income and likely made um decisions accordingly. And I don't know that the savings outweighs. I don't know. I've got a funny feeling about this one. And I'm just talking about the two months. I'm not talking about the cutting the positions.
I, it just seems to me like the right thing to do is to, to wait until we can notice it correctly and get the errors fixed. Because we should be able to do that within the timeframe that Erin laid out earlier, correct?
And I will say, um Director Jeanine Upton is correct, the prior um exhibit A classified reduction was accurate and did say four hours per day. Um it was i- in the update somehow it was changed. Um but again, that was my error in not catching them. So I will take responsibility. And I apologize.
I'm uh, I'm happy to suggest we could strike those from exhibit A, approve everything. Minus those two and come back next time around with an exhibit B that adds those two items uh after the appropriate communication.
If we're gonna strike, I, my preference would be to strike one, two and three. Um like I said, I'm still a little bit uneasy about um oh, the date. Okay, it's the date for all of the, I'm sorry, it's been a long night. Um
So if were you saying that you would wanna uh strike all MIA positions to allow for the five days notice as well as a correction of the scripters error?
I I was fine with just striking two and three because that's, that's the that's, that's the error we really need to, need to correct. As you point out, we're still within guidelines for approving number one.
Well, not technically is the problem. We're like two days out of notice.
Something to consider is that this is the classified resolution. The timeline for the classified resolution for notification is later than the certificated timeline. We have um, I think we relayed that in in a, in a previous session. But we said we wanted to do them at the same time, so it gave employees that notification. So you could um table this one, have the corrections amended and either brought forward at a special meeting with the corrected edition or at your net regular meeting. Again, because of spring break, we only have one regular meeting scheduled in April. But there is always potential for a um, a special meeting as long as it's noted and has the action item clearly um listed.
And Superintendent Kloski, I have tried to reshare my screen. Do you see notice of layoff adversary uh reductions in force? Um if you see here, it says if employees are be terminated or adversely affected at the end of their letter of assignment, the notification layoff is June fifteenth. If employees are be terminated or adversely effective during their letter of assignment, which is mid-year, notice will be given as soon as practicable. So it does, June fifteenth um is the latest occur, that it can occur. But um I'm obligated to give mid-year notice of adverse impact um as soon as possible. So it is a different timeline.
Are the um are the union positions two hundred and sixty day a year contracts or are they?
They're varied. They're varied numbers of days. Um most are um more than school year, but they are, um some of them are two oh five, some are two ten. Each one of them is, is a different number of days.
I believe the range of impacted positions are from two oh three to um two oh three to two fourteen. There is a position which is category, I'm gonna get it wrong. Uh one of the two positions, um the person is, is resigning, so it will not have an impact for them. For that uh July, August piece.
Is okay. Set the position to the number two? It's, it's, it's been in the personnel report. So, okay, um here's, here's where my head is going. Number one, I think, I think we need, I, I think we need to do this right. And if we're laying off, I think we need to do it with the appropriate notice and and for people to have the opportunity to be heard. My I on the two hundred and sixty day positions, um those are full-time year-round positions that I don't, I'm not as worried about. Um in terms of reducing sooner rather than later, especially, well, I'm just, I those are full-time year-round positions. If the other ones are much more related to the school year um and people are counting on their jobs, um you know, through the school year, then I, I just see that as much more of a hardship. Um I mean, they're all hardships, but just an un- um unanticipated hardship, I should say. And I guess my, I don't know, maybe I'm reading more into this. It's just a not, you know, it's ending a contract versus ending a contract early is, it just feel really different to me. No one else is talking, so I don't know if I'm like way off base and no one else thinks it's, you know, is concerned about it.
Well, the difference is we're talking about this year versus next year, right? I mean-
No, we're talking about July. I'm talking about July and August. I'm not talking about the positions as a whole. I'm talking about
Okay.
Ending them in end of June versus ending them August 31st.
Yeah, okay. I, I'm think, I mean, we're, we still have more meeting to meet tonight. I, I'm personally comfortable with just postponing this whole thing until our April meeting. Is nobody else comfortable with just pushing it forward because, or, or to a special meeting? So we can dot all the, all our i's and cross our t's.
In the alternative, I, I believe you could, if you wanted, you could approve the resolutions as presented on the March 11th. Although they were not properly noticed.
My, wouldn't be the June 30th date. That would be the end of the contract year date for clarification.
Wait, can you repeat?
No, June 30th is the end of the contract year for administrators.
I think we're talking about the, the classified resolution and the, the initial exhibit that was presented to the board was the correct one and didn't make an amendment to the date. It had it as just through the school year. So if you so choose, you could approve that resolution as it was reflected in the March 11th meeting where we did not make an adjustment to capture the June 30th date.
So what was the date then?
It was through the end of the year was, was the verbiage, I believe.
End of academic year?
End of their contract year. It was for the start of the next
30th.
August 30?
That's the end. So the, the classified contracts go for the year rounds go through August 30th.
Okay.
Administrator contracts are pretty much July 1 through June 30, but the other contracts are September 1 through August, I guess, 31.
And when you see administrator, you mean leadership administrator?
Correct.
Okay. So my preference would be to strike one, two, and three from exhibit A for today. Get the correct notice and language in there and proceed on four, five, and six. That's my preference.
I'd be, I'd be fine with that. No, I, I, my preference would be to keep one, but in the, if we can you know, the superintendent has provided us with one, two, and three, four, five, and six, and the errors only in two and three. My preference would be to keep one, but I am, I'm willing to strike the first three. It's a slightly more conservative route, and I, I appreciate that.
I'm fine with that.
So as to have maybe discussion on that, maybe you want to do an amendment or do a motion on that, and then you can have that discussion. It might segment that.
I think, I think that's a good idea, and since it's my suggestion, I'm happy to. It's not improper for me to make the motion, is it? Now, so I move that we approve resolution. Sorry, going to the right number, 694. Modifying exhibit A to strike positions one, two, and three. That will be addressed to a later date.
Second.
Any further discussion on that motion?
So, Deborah, on the same thoughts and philosophy of why I you know, didn't vote for the other resolution is like, I didn't feel like we gave enough time to let the community know, so that's where you're making a couple of different changes, but I, my vote would be not for the resolution as a whole. I don't know if that impacts the changes. If we're going.
Can, I'm sorry, I, I think I missed a word. Can you just repeat what you said?
So just on the same stance as why I voted no for the other resolution was that you know, I don't think that we gave enough, did enough community engagement with the community. And so I don't have particular issues with the language of who in this resolution, but it's more of on the same principle as the other resolution. I would vote no.
Okay, so where are you, are you making a motion?
And I'm just letting you know, kind of like saying discussions, so that when you know, it wasn't for the, the, the strikes and the changes that were made. It was just for the whole resolution as a whole.
Right. Any other discussion? All in favor of resolution 694 as amended? Please indicate by saying aye. All opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Any abstentions? By a vote of four to one, resolution 694 is approved as amended.
And I would like to personally apologize to both the board and the public at large for the error.
Thank you. For B, partial governance process monitoring board policy 1800 OE 12, emergency superintendent succession plan for superintendents medical leave. Superintendent Kloski? You're on.
Sorry, didn't want anyone to hear this anyways. As the board can see on the personnel report, it is necessary that I take an extended medical leave starting at spring break and potentially through May 17th. Always hopeful of be able to at least do some community communication during that time, but there will be no driving. I have heard that, so that is something that needs to be considered. But we do have a policy that has a succession plan in my absence, and so I am asking that the board take action to appoint Assistant Superintendent Fred Rundle as acting superintendent during my medical leave. And you will note also on the consent agenda on the personnel report, there is a, a stipend that is being recommended for that service by Dr. Rundle.
You're on mute.
Boy, it's getting late. We are so far past where we're supposed to be. I apologize to everyone for that. I'm looking for a motion to appoint Assistant Superintendent Fred Rundle as acting superintendent for April 5, 2021 through potentially May 17, 2021.
All moved? Second.
Any discussion? Dr. Rundle, are you willing?
I, I am. I don't love it under these circumstances and want the speedy recovery for our superintendent. And we're all gonna be pulling for her, but I will certainly step in and do my very best to keep us going in her absence.
Thank you for those sentiments. I think they're all agreed. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Dr. Rundle will be assistant superintendent, I'm sorry, acting superintendent beginning April 5, 2021 through May 17, 2021. Thank you. Um, and we're on to the consent agenda. Looking for a motion?
I move we approve the consent agenda as published.
Seconded?
Thank you. Any discussion? It's been a long night. All in favor of approving the consent agenda as published, please indicate by saying aye. Any consent agenda is approved by a vote of five to zero. Superintendent announcements?
Nothing major at this time because we did opt to move fundamental four. We'll discuss the timing of, of that at a later date. And also just to make the board aware, some of you have already probably been watching this through your legislative work, that we will need to bring a resolution to the board most likely in April for authorization to use the emergency graduation waiver, similar to what we did last year because of the ongoing impact of COVID-19 for, in particular, this year's 2021 graduates. So that will be on the April 22nd regular meeting agenda.
Um, next we have legislative reports.
Thank you. So the King County group has continued to meet East King County. You heard part of that update. Earlier in our meeting, we've spent the last two Fridays meeting with federal legislators and really working to understand ESSER funding and how that rolls out and to advocate for a better model for future funding from the federal level. While we were in the federal house, we took some time also to discuss high-stakes statewide testing and how it doesn't really serve the needs of our students. So looking to the federal government to provide waivers and relaxation there. It's something that it's always good to talk about while we're there as well as for funding of IDEA, but it's been great that our little group of five districts has managed to reach all the way up to Congress. So good job. Let's see. Legislative committee, oh! A tip of the hat. It, it, I, I can't believe that it was just last week. We met with our week on the Hill, and I want to report that our student representatives did an extraordinary job in all of our meetings. They set everyone up. We were joined by Bellevue and Lake Washington with those meetings. Our students really set the tone, brought urgency to it by telling their story, and I think really captured the attention of our legislators. So a thank you to the two of them and a kudos for excellent work done. The, the main topic from legislative committee in debriefing about that is, is all of us across the state looking at ESSER funding and, and state stabilization of funds. This is hitting everyone in really unique ways. And to the point when I use my analogy of structures and, and the floor, even for those districts like Yakima that are receiving upwards of $70 million ESSER funds under this formula, even that district wasn't provided the base funding per student that was necessary. So they're being short-changed in this as well. I attended the equitable access for ELL students with disabilities and special needs care with the Equity and Education Coalition. Was really interesting. It centered mostly in community-based partners and the partnerships that happen with school districts in providing services for students that aren't always provided at the state or federal level. And there's some opportunity for some crossover in advocacy there perhaps that is recorded, so you can go to their website and see the recording of that lunch. It's about an hour and a half, great information. I met today with the PTA advocacy. That's the council level advocates from all of the units across the district. It was pointed out to me that our COVID-19 dashboard, it says it was last updated on March 15th, so there was question whether that was a typo or not. And then there was some numbers that seemed to fluctuate with, I think it was Mercer High School currently shows three students, three staff. I guess that's September 2nd to the present. And then close contacts at Lakewood, that was three, but apparently one point it was nine, and then it changed to six, so the numbers are so there were some questions about that and the consistency of that dashboard, so just a tap to maybe ask. I directed them to nurses to ask you questions as to what's happening there, but said that I would bring that up to all of you. Wes Mercer is holding a DEI discussion on the 15th of April, so the planning for that should be interesting through their new DEI group. The city council is currently in the process of looking at and reviewing its transportation improvement plan. Their plan planning, there's currently an interactive map with an opportunity to provide survey input. There's a crossover between the school district and their tip plan as it involves our safe routes to schools. So I know it was a big ribbon cutting when the corridor was opened up when Tracy Drinkwater was president of the board. So it's a great opportunity for us to lean in with our partners at the city council and our advocacy groups to provide input on that. And then there's continued work around letters addressing social distancing, concerns for remote students and access to rigorous education for next year, defining the fall and budgeting. Lots happening as always with PTA advocacy. A reminder that WASDA is currently in the amending and proposing positions period for legislative committee. That period goes until May 14th. So if there are any permanent positions or legislative positions that you think are not being addressed or would like to propose amendments to existing positions, this is the window to do that. And if you'd like some help going through the catalog or walking through that system, I'm happy to provide any help and partner in writing that. It's, it sounds more daunting than it actually is. If you have a great idea for something that should be a permanent position or legislative position, we have until May 15th, uh, May 14th to get that proposal in. It's better to go earlier so that we can get partners in other districts to support us. The reminders about NSBA 2021 conference on April 8th to 10th registration is open. WASDA training onboard is ongoing and the May 18th to 19th equity conference through WASDA, WASDA and the AWSP. So that registration is also open. And that covers it. Outside of all eyes on the legislature right now and those budgets rolling out. Are they gonna address it or not?
Thank you. Um, board reports, anyone? Meg, Ty?
I don't have a real report, but I wanted to apologize to the people of Hertzogovina, Hertzogovina for mangling their name earlier. Sorry.
David?
Nothing, nothing to report.
Thank you.
Just, just my best to Donna and looking forward to having Fred again in the interim. We, we've been there before. I know what it's so Fred is seasoned as an interim, so thank you. And actually, final one. As we think about communicating school reopening and the year coming up, we should probably communicate some of these cuts as well. I, I appreciate some of that the, the discussion we've had around that. So thank you.
Thanks, David. Tam?
I have nothing.
I will be brief, but a little bit of important information. Well, first of all,
Well, first of all, I want to express gratitude to our middle, I think sixth grade had started their last meeting, but our high school welcoming our ninth and 12th graders this week. All reports and my house is much happier than it, than it has been. And I've heard that the students are thrilled. I think things are going well and that, that it's really making a big difference for them. So thank you to everyone who's worked to make that happen. Looking forward to welcoming our seventh and eighth graders back next week and then our 10th and 11th graders finally right after spring break. And the, I know of, you know, fall sports are well underway and, and it's great to see all the live streaming and the in-person and, and student involvement that's happening there. And just, just seeing our kids' lives, you know, moving back towards normal has been really nice to see. So thank you again, that has been a tremendous amount, a heavy lift for our operations and our athletics and high school. And every, every little thing that they do is, is that much more complicated with everything happening now. There was a high school PAC meeting this morning where we talked about some of the impacts on students. I won't get into that, but there was some discussion of prom and graduation. So planning is underway. Nothing to report, but Principal Kelly was looking for just some feedback from PAC team members about just preferences in terms of, in terms of hoping to make these experiences for our seniors as, as real as possible. But you know, things are looking good for graduation and it will happen in some way. It's just, it's just still an unknown. They're working on locations and sizes and things like that. So that planning is well underway and that's happening. So that is it for me as well. We are recessing. We're still doing this, right? We have to, we're recessing during executive session to discuss potential litigation or litigation pursuant to RCW 4231101I. No final action will be taken. We will reconvene the regular meeting for adjournment where there will be nothing else happening and no action taken. It is 10:34. Do people need five minutes or do we just push through?
I think I need to talk to, to.
Need to talk to each.
And get him prepped up. So five minutes would be good.
Oh, okay. Let's take five minutes.
And President Laurie, we could also probably state, we don't anticipate being much more than 30 minutes.
Okay, that's what, that was my guess. So we anticipate, we will recess till 10:40, start our executive session and reconvene in regular session at approximately 10 after 11. And again, no action will be taken. So thank you all will be in recess until 10:40. And there, for everyone, there's a different link that Donna sent earlier today for executive session. Thank you.
Hopefully not. Okay, at 11:14 the board concluded its executive session and a motion was made with a second and a vote of five to zero to adjourn. No action was taken at the executive session. Thanks everyone.
Thanks everyone.
I think we should, can we chat tomorrow at some point about that other thing? Just let me, okay, just let me know when you can.